Hi Fran.
Hi Barbara. Hi Barbara.
Hi, who else is on?
Uh, well, they're signing on now, so I don't know who all these people are right now.
No.
We don't know who they are.
Can you mute them if they not, uh, uh, board members?
Yes.
Just for right now, please. I need to say something.
Oh, they can hear you, me muting them would just re- they can't hear, I mean, we won't hear them.
That's true, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Old age child.
That's a blessing.
But anyway, I've laid up in the bed, I ain't had a chance to read nothing because my knee went out, uh, late yesterday evening, and, uh, thought it would be better for my doctor's appointment. So, I tried with crutches, I couldn't put any weight on it at all.
Okay.
So, uh, I called to cancel my doctor's appointment and waited all day to get a message back from the doctor as to what she wanted me to do.
Oh, okay.
Go to ER, or, uh, uh, what's the other thing?
Urgent care. Yeah.
I'm like, hell, if you'd have called me earlier, I could have done that.
Right.
Yeah. So I decided to go in and stay for the meeting and, uh, go in the morning.
Chief is signed on. Hi Chief.
How are you?
I'm tired, how are you sir?
I'm there as well, just as tired I'm, I'm sure as I'm, uh, you are as well, so it's.
Barbara was talking to you Chief.
Good evening Barbara.
Hello.
Yeah, you see, you see I got myself blocked out Chief, I'm, yeah, I don't want to read now.
I figured it out. Show everybody that I have to wear my new cheaters now to actually read stuff.
So now you can read.
Uh, that, I've got that age where I can wear, and I can wear them on the tip of my nose. It looks scary.
Okay, alright, yeah.
Well, it's glad to hear that everyone's in good spirits.
Right now?
Yeah, we'll see how long that lasts.
Uh, well, I think we can keep it like that throughout the whole meeting, at least that's what I'm hoping for.
Right, right. Hello Michael Wheezy.
Hi guys.
How are you?
Hi Michael.
What's happening?
Nothing much.
Nothing much, but I need to talk to you at some point about an idea that I have. This is, uh, Barbara by the way.
Okay, what's up?
Uh, I don't want to talk about it right now.
Uh, we can. No, Elise Dales.
Just call me anytime.
Okay, I will.
Hi Ms. Dales.
Hi Fran.
How are you?
Michael.
Michael, I'll call you next week about those locations.
Thank you, I'm eating Fritos.
We want some. Hello Ms. Kathy, uh, Bissard.
Hi, how you doing?
I'm tired, how are you?
I'm doing okay.
That's good. Hello Ms. Miranda Avant Elliott. Oh, she got her mic off and she gone, and so.
Hey. Hello everyone.
Hi.
Good evening.
Hi everybody.
And then everybody that I didn't say hello to, I see, hello everybody. Ms. Dorothy White Coleman and.
Good evening, everyone.
And Ms. Jay Mabley and Pat Barrett and a lot of other people.
Oh, and Mr. Barrett, this is Barbara, you will be included in on my conversation with Mr. Wheezy.
Okay, alright.
Alrighty.
Oh man. Are we gonna be here till 12 o'clock tonight guys?
No.
Who said no? Was that, uh, Elise?
That was Kathy.
Okay Kathy. Hey Kathy. Unfortunately, you and I do not call that matter.
Oh.
Yeah.
You and I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, uh.
You and I can't make that decision.
Oh.
If we're here to.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
Fran.
Yes ma'am.
Give me the information for the closed session, please.
Well, I can't, I can't do it now. I sent it to you in that email.
I can't get to the chair at the computer, I'm stuck in my bed.
Oh, and see, I don't have the information that you guys have.
I'll send it to you.
I was about to say, ask Miranda to send it to you. Thank you, Ms. Avant Elliott.
You're welcome.
Uh, but I leave the door unlocked, 'cause I can't make it to the door.
Hello Mayor.
Hi Fran.
Hi, hi, uh, Alderwoman Reed, I know that voice.
Okay. That's not good.
Hello Mayor.
Hello, how's everybody?
Good.
I'm there, how Teresa?
Hello.
Hello everybody, hi Barbara.
Hi James Carroll.
Uh, go on and make it now, and just put it on the side.
Hey Barbara. Barbara, I want some of that.
Yep, already got one.
It's 7:01, I guess we may, I'll, I'll just call the meeting to order with roll call.
Okay, Alderwoman West.
Present.
Oh, the woman Tatman.
Here.
Alderwoman Reed.
Okay.
Alderman Carroll.
Here.
Alderman Thomas.
Present.
Alderman Christian is excused, did everybody see his note? Alderwoman Dales.
Present.
Alderwoman Avant Elliott. You gotta say, I can't hear you, your, your mic is off of Avant Elliott.
Present.
Okay, and then the mayor is here, Dorothy White Coleman is here, Chief Eiler is here, and City Clerk. And also the Senator Patrick Howard is here, and Kathy Bissard, the selector is here. Okay Mayor.
Alrighty, thank you. Uh, we'll move to the approval of the agenda.
Mayor, Avant Elliott, I would like to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
The second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I would like, there's a question, um, two things. I would like to, uh, make a motion for an amendment of the agenda. Um, as read, it has approve our training costs, approve over 500 invoices, discuss the budget, and then the adoption of the budget. And then the citizens' comment is not until after that. I would like to make a motion that we would move, uh, the citizen, citizen comments up to, uh, after the discussion of the budget, approve for the budget, for, I'm sorry, the approval of the budget.
This is Alderwoman Dales, I would like to second that.
Alright, it's been moved and properly seconded, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose is nay.
Nay.
Um, Mayor, you didn't ask for the question.
Alright, are there any questions?
Okay, oh, it was suggested for citizen comments to come after the budget approval, is what it was saying?
Yes, on the agenda, the citizen comment is after, and I made a motion to put it before, um, the adoption of the budget, to give the citizens an opportunity to ask questions before we adopt the budget.
Okay.
Alright, any other, uh, any other comments?
No.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose is nay. Alrighty. So then we'll move into new business, approval of the, uh, training cost, Alderman, all of person, Avant Elliott.
Yes, thank you Mayor, um, the board received information about a parliamentarian, so I, uh, went to the National Parliamentarian Association and just reviewed a few individuals' profiles, and, uh, one person stood out in particular based on his expertise. And so I emailed a couple of people to ask, um, about their availability for a Saturday training. Um, I thought that maybe, um, the training with the Attorney General would kind of be long. And that I didn't want to try to fit it in on the same night, but the person's cost is $500 for three hours. I'm not sure if another person, um, cost would be less, um, but right now that would be, um, that person's cost. So I was putting it on the agenda for the board to approve it, um, so then that person can send an invoice and be scheduled to do, um, training on, uh, Robert's Rule of Order and any other procedure that we may need support on related to parliamentarian, um, procedures.
May I have a comment, this is Alderwoman Dales.
Proceed.
Um, I would just like to say to the board that we have free training from the Municipal League that can get more educators based on what's going on in our state. I feel that we shouldn't have to pay for training when it's already available to us, which already paid it through our fees through the Municipal League. They're very versed on what goes on in the state of Missouri, and we already have it available.
So the information that I sent concerning the Municipal League, there is a cost. So training conferences, um, do include a cost. So basically, for an unlimited amount of people participating, um, that will be that person's cost. So, is either something we, we value and see the need for, or is something we don't? So, um, right now, I know that our procedures are not that well, and that's what individuals complain about. So, it's just a matter of the board deciding whether or not we want to do that. So, I'm gonna put forth the motion, and I'll let the person know based on that. I would like to make a motion for approval.
I, I, I have another comment.
Okay, we haven't got to the question, we haven't got to the question yet, I'm trying to do the motion. I would like to make a motion to approve, uh, $500 for a parliamentarian to, uh, facilitate training for the board.
The second.
Alderman Carroll.
Mayor, you can ask for a question, please.
Uh, okay, you can, uh, just let me get a second, uh, who was that?
Alderman Carroll's second, Mayor.
Okay then, Carroll's second it.
Uh, excuse me one moment, please. If you're not speaking, can you please, uh, mute your mic? Thank you.
Are there any discussions now?
Yes, uh, Mayor, may I?
Yes, please.
I, I want to follow up and for a point of clarification. Um, I also checked, uh, with the Municipal League, who offers, you know, several training opportunities. And I know in our budget, that training that is provided by the Municipal League is, um, already paid for. So my concern is, especially now during, um, a pandemic, that we be a little bit more prudent. If we can get this training through the Municipal League, and it's already paid for out of our budget, that we decide at those parameters, maybe if we can hold off to get an opportunity to see if the Municipal League, because they if the Municipal League, um, we can get a schedule from them to look at when the same training is offered, and we take advantage of that, because it's already paid for through our, our membership, opposed to spending additional money that's not budgeted for, especially during this time, when we're looking at, you know, trying to be a little bit more prudent during this time of pandemic.
This is Alderwoman West, I have a question. Uh, and this is directed first to either Alderwoman Tatman or Dales, it doesn't matter. Um, did you speak to anyone at the Municipal League, if so, whom? And, um, did they actually tell you that the training would be free?
I'll answer that and clarify what I said. What I said was, looking at the Municipal League training, which you can go to the website.
No, 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 I have a question.
I'm, I'm trying to answer your question, so may I please answer?
No, not like that, and I asked you.
I, it's not how I answer.
Who did you speak to?
It's not up to you. You said either one of us, and I said I would like to answer. So, if you want, don't want me to answer, I won't, but you said to either one of us.
Proceed.
Oh, thank you. Um, so, I want to first clarify what I said. What I said was, the Municipal League offers Robert's Rule of Order training, and actually, you know, they have new, um, new persons who've been elected training, I think we've all been to those trainings. And the parliamentary, um, portion is a part of the training, we've all been a part of that. So what I stated for clarification is, looking at what's offered by the Municipal League. And that training is a part of what they offer. If by us being a member, and it's already paid for, can we take advantage of that? Instead of adding an additional $500 to our budget that's not budgeted during a time of pandemic. I think it's important that we be a little bit more prudent, and look for as many ways possible not to spend money, or to spend as little as possible to do what we need to do.
Anyone else?
This is Alderwoman Dales, and to, uh, Alderwoman West, um, answer question. Um, yes, I did speak with, uh, Pat Kelly of the Municipal League. He, um, indicated anytime we needed any type of training, that he would provide it for us. And most times, they come with, um, attorneys that can ask specific questions regarding Robert's Rule, or anything that we have. They just had a class today, and they were very versed on how the laws are going to be changing within the state of Missouri if certain, uh, bills go through. And they can apply that to the training that we need based on our municipality. So, even though, along with the training, they also include what is valid for our state, our municipality, and our class of city.
Thank you, Alderwoman Dales, my second question is.
Uh, uh, speaking to the mic, we can barely hear you.
My second question is to Alderwoman Avant Elliott, is that better?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, who did you speak to at the Municipal League? And how much, if anything, did they say they would charge?
So, I spoke with Stuart, and that's the email that I forwarded. He indicated the training in the fall that you register for, there's normally a cost. He mentioned web, webinars, but even when you go on the site, there's nothing specific to Robert's Rule of Order. So he did not say, when I asked him specifically if they could provide that training, he just indicated that there are several training options. But he did not flat out say, oh, we can offer that, we can schedule it, and it will be free. So, um, if this motion passed, it does not mean that I have to engage with them. I can ask them a second time, uh, whether or not they have something, but training is a part of administrative cost, and it is something that we are obligated to do as elected officials. And because, just as tonight, those multiple interjections or Robert Rule, Rules of Order violation, and as we prepare to effectively move forward and be productive, we need some type of training. So, if I offer for someone else to look for an individual that might be cheaper or something, I did not get a response before tonight. So no one, even in the email, whether it's Tatman or Dale, said, oh, there's, I spoke with somebody and they're willing to offer this. So I am just taking the initiative to try to have training, and between us voting and me contacting them, it can change, but if it's already passed, then I know that if Stuart indicated one, one more time, that that's not an option. Then we know that we have training, um, scheduled, so we can move forward and be productive in these meetings, so citizens can see us operate effective.
Thank you.
Uh. Mayor Pearson, this is Alderwoman Reed.
Proceed, please.
Uh, I mean, I know, all of us have been to the new elected, uh, whatever, training, and we've been to other trainees that MML does, and all of them cost. So, I mean, even City Clerk could tell you that each one costs. And in the past, we've had certain alderpeople to sign up for classes and then not attend, so then we lose that money. This way, this class will be set up perfectly for us, and us only, at our designated time, at our designated place, on our Zoom. And also in the past, when we did go to meetings, um, some alderpeople would stay in town and get hotel costs. So this way, we wouldn't have this. We would have only the cost for this person. We got a lot of new people. It's a way for all of us to learn at the same time and ask questions. That's just my comment. Thank you.
Mayor, this is Alderwoman Dales, I have another comment. I spoke with the president of the Municipal League, and he would be doing the Zoom, and it would not cost us anything. I asked him that, um, and the, the, um, the ones that we sign up are specifically for the Municipal League, when they raise, do their fundraising, and they have the annual meetings every month. This is something based on Robert Rules, based on the state of Missouri, based on the fourth-class city, to give us the information that we need. So, where we already have that paid for as a Municipal League within St. Louis County Municipal League. And it can also be asked through the state of Missouri, if they would give us training. And we can ask that before we pass a bill or pass a, or, uh, a fee, because they can set up a Zoom, all of these set up Zooms to give us the information that we need.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Um, like I said, as mission Mayor, um, even if this motion is passed, in the interim, as soon as tomorrow, maybe Fran can reach out and confirm whether there's something different. But if not, we will be prepared to have training next month without any delay. So, it, I don't think that it will prevent us from being physically responsible and checking on another option in the interim. I'm just trying to move forward, so I can at least be prepared to tell that person that it's approved, and this is the date that we're gonna meet and start taking care of business. So that was, that's my only objective. We have a second on the table.
Mayor? May I?
Yes, you may.
Uh, Miranda, is there a reason why we want to go forth in improving a cost before we do further investigation to solidify, number one, if it's free, like we've stated, or at a lesser cost? Is there a reason why we're rushing to pass an amendment to spend $500 that we may not have to spend? Miranda?
Answer the question.
I've already answered, um, no, no further discussion, we can go on with the vote.
Are there any other discussion?
Mayor, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Um, I've just been listening to, uh, the comments being made about training, and I completely agree with training. Training's always gonna cost you something. Uh, is anybody familiar with the Municipal Government Institute, through the MML? It's for elected officials, and it's for appointed officials. I completed the training back in 2018. It is, uh, coursework to get you certified as the municipal official. And the coursework covers budgets, emergency management, fundamentals of municipal government, parliamentary procedures, planning and zoning, revenue sources, economic development, ethics, liability and risk, personnel law, public works contracting, sunshine law, and, and a few other courses. I found it pretty valuable when I went through it. Uh, I know I mentioned before, a few years ago, it's probably something that, um, the board would want to look in to themselves. Uh, the cost, I, I can't remember what the cost was, but it was really reasonable. And for per person, what you get out of this, I think you, you would get out, uh, a, a, a lot more, uh, training out of this particular certification, uh, and, or bang for your buck. It's just a suggestion.
It's $150 to enroll, I, I, I received that information imported as well for the training, it's $150 to enroll. Per person.
Uh, this is Alderwoman Dales, um, that is the class that you can take, you can take it online. And I think the city is already registered, 'cause I take the classes all the time, and I've never paid anything. I think the city has already paid, it's the Missouri Municipal, Missouri Municipal League.
It's Alderman Thomas.
Alright, proceed.
It's my understanding that this is a requirement, if you are a newly elected official, in order to know what you're gonna be faced with as an elected official. And if it's incorporated in the training, then I don't think that we need to purchase outside of the training. And that's my comment.
Another discussion. Then, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose is nay.
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 Mayor, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, we'll do, we'll, we'll call it for a roll call vote, yes.
Okay. Alderman Thomas?
No.
Alderman Carroll?
Yes.
Alderman, Alderwoman Dales?
No.
Alderwoman West?
Yes.
Alderwoman Tatman?
No.
Alderwoman Reed?
Yes.
Alderwoman Avant Elliott?
Yes.
We have four yess and three nos and one absent.
We have four yess and three nos, though.
And one absent.
And one absent.
Yes, sir. Motion passes. It's just a majority. Yeah, it's just, it's only two-thirds for ordinance this, Mayor.
Alright, let's move to the second, uh, alright, approval of 500.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes?
I'm sorry, I closed, uh. I'm trying to find it.
44,000.
I'm sorry. I, I would like to make a motion, uh, Mayor, to pay, um, the invoices over 500. There are 11 of them, for $44,566.19.
Um, is that second?
Second, Avant Elliott.
Are there any discussion?
Mayor, this is Alderwoman Reed.
Yes.
I had a question, um, for Chief. I actually have five questions, actually. Um, Chief, I saw where you had an invoice in here for ammunition for, I think it says, training shotgun bullets. I was just interested to know, what, what is the need for shotgun bullets? And if you're talking about the civil unrest and the things that we passed before with the emergency plan for you, why would you not be using rubber bullets? I mean, can you just give us a little more detail on this invoice that you purchased ammunition for shotguns?
So, we, we purchase ammunition every year. So we purchase ammunition every year for shotguns because we qualify twice a year for proficiency. That's part of it. The remainder of the ammunition is for stock that we keep in our police vehicles. We do not use beanbag guns, rubber bullets, pepper spray balls. Reason being is we can call in those resources that have those items. Now, if the city purchased those items, I'd be more than willing to make those purchases and use them, but they are costly. But we do have the ability to call those resources and have those devices to be used.
So your first line of defense would be to shoot a person with shotgun bullets instead of rubber bullets? Because there's more of a cost with beanbag, pepper spray, and/or rubber bullets?
No.
Hearing? Or are you saying you need shotgun bullets in order to stay qualified and certified as a police department?
The shotgun, the shotgun device serves a very specific purpose. It is not our first go-to. Our first go-to when we use force is communication. Usually, that takes care of the problem. I'm trying to think the last time we've had a police-involved shooting where we had, actually, it was 2018, when two of our police officers were shot. That's the last and only time that I can remember that we have discharged a firearm at somebody. But we do practice and say proficient in the event that we have to use that device.
Okay. So these are mainly training shotgun bullets?
But training and inventory that we do keep in the police vehicles in the event that we do have to use them.
All righty. Mayor, is there anybody on the line for the rec center?
We have someone on the line from rec center.
Amy's here.
Okay, well, I had a question about, they were ordering snacks, a couple hundred dollars worth of snacks. And I thought, because our pool is not open or anything's going on with the pool, they've purchased snack bar items, you know, food and condiments that you would sell. I know I saw some shelving in there, but why would we be buying snacks for the rec center that we're not going to use the snack bar until next summer? And food would not be fresh to purchase now, like Cheez-Its and things like that. And I saw on that, also a comment on there is that I saw where on the receipt, they were purchasing these things at Sam's. And they tried to run the credit card, and it got voided once. And then there was a voided transaction again. It was like declined, and then declined a second time. And then a third time, the purchases went through. So Amy, can you speak to that in any way? That was just very odd. On the purchase and the decline two times, and then it finally going through the third time.
She's not muted.
Fran, can you unmute me?
You're not muted. Who said that?
We can hear you, Amy.
Who asked to be unmuted?
Amy has to be unmuted.
Okay, she has, she muted herself. I can't unmute when you mute yourself.
Go ahead and speak, Amy. Unmute yourself if you're muted.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the reason we have money in there is, first of all, that we are hoping to open snack bar next year. And we have to have money for the month of, last part of May and first part of June. The second part is that because it is receiving revenue is because we are purchasing snacks and things like that that we are selling through our office rather than our vending machines. And we are making profit with that.
So you're using these, you're selling snacks from the front desk now, rather than the snack bar itself?
That's right.
Okay. I was just hoping you weren't purchasing food today for next summer.
Oh, no. No, none of it.
Okay, and then who purchased these? Why did it get declined two times? I'm not sure if a different card was used the third time for it to go through?
There is a problem right now with a Sam's credit card. So I had to use a US Bank Visa card in place of that.
So the city has a Sam's card that is not working for you, and then you had to use the US Bank card? That's what you're saying?
That's right.
Okay. And also, I saw where you guys purchased a lawnmower. Were you the person that purchased the lawnmower as well?
It was, yes.
Okay. Why do we pay taxes on that lawnmower? I would assume we buy items at Home Depot often, and we just wasted like almost $30 in taxes. Don't we have a taxes insulator there?
There is one, but it wasn't activated at that time. In the future, it will be activated.
So we just lost that money on paying taxes on the lawnmower?
Unfortunately, yes. No, it was not activated when the purchase was made.
Okay. And also, on those Vermont sales, on that Vermont sale invoice, it still addresses Mark Dickerson. So this is really for you too, Mayor. It still addresses Mark Dickerson as the contact person. I know Vermont is who we use for the rec centers, you know, software or whatever. But it just, Mark has been gone now for a year. It doesn't look good that he's still on our invoices as a city.
I will take care of that.
Thank you. Those are all my comments and questions. Thank you.
Mayor, this is I have a question for the Chief.
Proceed.
Chief, Autumn Woman Reed asked you about the gunshot bullets. Do you purchase those every year?
Yes, we do have a budget for ammunition for every year because we have to train with them. We train twice a year on shotgun and firearm sidearm.
Okay, so you indicated that you keep some in the car. So you use it for training, and you keep some for the shotguns that you have in your vehicles?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any? Go right here. Who's that?
I'm sorry, this is Autumn Woman Tappman. I did have an additional question for Amy. She stated that there is a problem with Sam's card. Could you share with us what that issue is?
Okay. In January or February, the card expired. It was supposed to be renewed, and it was not renewed on time. And the balance is still being disputed.
So, am I understanding, is the account closed until the dispute?
The account is still open, but there is a dispute on the payment of it. And Lori is still investigating to find out why this amount was not transferred from one card to another card. Normally, in the past years, when the card expired and a new card was issued, it was the amount on the old card was transferred to the new card. But for some reason, this year, that did not happen.
And so that means that that card can't be used until that dispute is settled, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any further discussions? Then all in favor say aye.
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 Opposees? As have it. Motion passes. The discussion of the budget for approval.
Mayor?
Yeah?
This is Autumn Woman Avant Elliott. I just wanted to share some of my findings from today. I looked at the previous budget, and we pretty much indicated the same budget numbers until we got to, like, capital fund. Then those were, I'm not sure if they were listed as the actuals. Maybe Howard can share. But once you got there, those numbers were not the same as the 1920 budget year. Howard, would you mind sharing? Is the capital fund, starting with the ordinary income expense 400, is that page that begins? The numbers are not the same as the 1920 budget year. And so I don't know if those are the numbers of the actuals. I was just trying to get clarification.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So are you asking if the numbers on the document that state budget 19 and 20 were the actual budget that were in system?
Yeah, so, okay, so under the capital fund, P and L budget overview, beginning with 4,000 line item, about 4,000 under income. It has 549,622.
Yes.
So is that amount the actual? Because it wasn't the budgeted. So I was just wondering, everything else was aligned with what the budget, exact budget number was? So I didn't know what the changes were on here. Were those the actuals or what?
No, these came directly from the accounting system. There were no changes to the 1920 budget. This was just ran from the accounting system.
Okay, so the budget that was approved last year, this pretty much this whole page is different from that. So that's why I was trying to see what happened with that. Because I don't know. So, I mean, because that'll throw that, they'll throw that budget year off. With that being different, it won't give us that comparison. But if they were the actuals, then I was like, okay, maybe they're the actuals. So it's just that particular page that is different along with... Is there anything that we can have to show for the constituents?
Yeah, so, yeah, when I'm looking at it, I didn't see any, there weren't any changes to it, so.
So like, for instance, it was 732,829 on the approved budget last year for that same line item.
Oh. That was a part of the document that you have?
The ordinance that I sent, it was on that one. Of the approved one from last year. So if you look at that, and because I was thinking that, I was like, well, am I looking at the wrong thing? And that's what's throwing me off?
Autumn Woman Avant Elliott, what is the ordinance number of the approved budget for 1920?
Okay. It is 2457. And he has, he has that through email already. 2457.
Okay, so Treasurer Howard, ordinance 2457 is what we approved last year when you were not here on June 24, 2019. And what she's saying is that your numbers on your budget overview does not match those numbers. And also, we did adjust 1920 budget in December of this year, actually, just to clarify what you said, because we passed ordinance 2559 to adjust it for the auditors. So actually, it has been manipulated since ordinance 2457. So it doesn't tie that, and that's what makes it look kind of odd. It looks like that our income for capital is actually going to go up this year for capital. It's like 19, it says like there's 556,000 that was budgeted for. And now we're going to budget that we're going to get 691,000 this 2021 year. So it's actually not in line.
Yeah, I follow that. I just, I haven't made any adjustments to it since, not to the current year, aside from the updates for the budget. And that was for the previous year. That wasn't the current year as far as the updates that I made.
Okay, so that 549, whatever, where was that at? That was somewhere else or something? Because I mean, like I said, for this particular page, all the numbers are off. But when you go to sewer fund, it's only off when you get to sewer repairs, and all the other numbers are fine. So like, when you get to sewer repair, 5,001 is 78,000, and the previous budget had 75. So then you know that it's a $5,000 increase versus it just being a $2,000 increase. So... But then the street bond fund, of course, I don't think, it doesn't have any number. So we didn't even have that as a line item to approve. So that was that. And then, so I'm thinking we should either do a line-by-line approval or a section approval, then the whole thing at once in order to effectively facilitate the additions or the changes. And if we want to vote on the changes as we go, then it will be documented before we actually approve it as amended, because everybody may not want every single change that exists. But then we can follow through that process, is what I'm thinking that makes sense. So...
So you're saying related to the current year?
Like, well...
You'd like to go line by line in order to...
I'm just talking about the approval process. Because I know that what Autumn Woman Reed had provided at the strategic planning meeting, it didn't look as if those changes were made. So I don't know if you didn't make them because you didn't have us to vote on them. But either way, you know, the ordinance just says that the board can add, take away, or adjust. But I don't know how you were perceiving individual directives. So if we vote on them, then maybe that will drive that change. So then we can vote on it as amended. Because essentially, every, everything is not captured based on what was discussed. But we've never been at a meeting where we were voting on those additions. It was just being stated. But even with the stated items, it's not included. So I know that that might be the issue. And then, just as a note, there was something that indicated it was... Mayor, I have another question for Mayor. Mayor, the payroll, did you have Howard to incorporate the salary increases for the staff? Like the next step that they would need to increase their salary?
No.
Did we do? Did we do the salary increase in this budget?
You're asking Howard?
I'm asking Howard, yes.
He wouldn't did it if you didn't direct him. I don't know.
Yeah, so... Yeah, so. So the, uh, the salaries that we used, it didn't directly indicate a salary increase. Nothing from, uh, nothing related to step increases.
Okay, so even those numbers are not included. So Chief has in his budget, his step increased, but all the other staff is not included. So, um.
So I have a question, please.
Actually, about five different employees in the police department that salaries went up. So it's interesting that you said no salaries did. So I'm not sure.
Well, I'm not directly, I'm, I'm not directly saying that no salaries did. I'm saying that, uh, when I went through the budget line items, uh, at the high level, uh, spot that I went through it, it wasn't directly indicated that these reflect, uh, step increases specifically.
Okay, and in, in some of your lines, there's, there's actually not enough budget to cover even the people that are here today. And in other lines, there's actually way more budget than what is needed in a certain department. So, I mean, I haven't broken down by person, but, I mean, I know you are not taking any directive from us. I'm assuming it's all coming from the mayor. So I, I guess probably best that we all just say what issues we have or what lines. Um, then, you know, and we can vote on it as we go. I think that's going to be, I think that's a really good idea, uh, Alda Woman Avon Elliott.
I have a question, please. Actually, I have three. Um, Treasurer Howard, um, I don't know if this helps. I remember when we were going over the budget at the last meeting. I also mentioned how the numbers were not in, in line and you said you, because they had carried over to the next page, whatever. So I don't know, because I looked at this too, if that was, um, a point of, uh, clarification there. Also, I had a question. I thought we weren't giving raises during this time of pandemic again. And I'm gonna keep saying that word because that's our way of life right now. That we were looking at, um, especially with trying to do a prudent budget that reflects the time that we're in now. So am I hearing that we're giving raises to employees? When I thought that, um, we weren't doing that, so are we doing that? And number three, looking at the line items too. Um, I'm, I'm looking at the, the changes in a few line items. I know there had been strategic meetings, but, um, I know with those not being official, I hope we're not adding in, um, numbers and things that then decided during those meetings that would reflect this year's budget.
Point of clarity, as stated before, Alda Woman Tappman, those meetings were voted on unanimously for us to have them. And you were actually part of that vote. So when we were discussing budget, that he was getting five of the board members, which is actually a two-thirds amount as needed to pass the budget. So it's just duplication of effort. It's fine. We can restate all of that tonight yet again. And he can change it or not and then not pass again, you know? So it's five of us there and it's like, three of you guys don't want to come when we have time to discuss that on another night rather than to be on a call to after midnight. It's kind of ridiculous when we have voted that we would be available on second Thursdays together. All eight of us voted to discuss those types of things. So it's not that it's unauthorized. It was actually brought to the board and voted on. So please just say that properly. Just say you can't make it and that's okay.
And I think that's not, uh, in, in information that's not known by anyone and everyone. And I'll give a point of clarification al- also to Reese. Um, and when I said unofficial, that's what I meant. Um, budget meetings are, uh, supposed to be, number one, posted where the community is also informed. A strategic meeting stating the strategic and then the budget is, um, discussed is to me, am I appropriate when the citizens, number one, is not informed to be privy to that? Number two, yes, I did vote, uh, unanimously. And like everything in life, when things happen, votes can change. And so I think I've made it very clear, uh, without, uh, hiding anything. That I have prior commitments to that, but my, forget about me. I'm thinking about the citizens. When those strategic meetings happened and they're stating that it's a strategic meeting and then the budget is discussed, that is a misrepresentation to the citizens who don't get an opportunity to be a part of those meetings. Yes, you guys had one meeting where you had a forum where the budget was discussed. But prior to that, I think that those things that were discussed as we're going through this budget, we're trying to pass a budget that is a meaningful budget, that's a respectable budget that we all can agree on.
Mayor, um, I like, this is Alda Woman Dills. I'd like to make a comment. Um, most of the time when those strategic meetings were posted, if they were, they had nothing to state about the budget. And it really is unfair to the citizens. Um, everything was talked about or more so bashed about. And it's unfair, uh, and also relating to the budget. Based on the statement that was put on the website, no one would be receiving the raise. So, uh, I want to know why are the policemen receiving them and no one else is?
Mayor, may I respond, please?
Yes, you may.
Okay, um, as a point of clarification, the budget is something that the board approved. We have not approved whether or not raises will take place or raises will not take place. But that is why we're having a budget meeting to have that discussion. Because something is posted does not change the fact that the budget is decided by the board. So we are either deciding that as a board, would it be documented and approved? That raises are going to be given or the raises are not going to be given. We have not voted on that. So without there being a vote even prior to now, we would not exclude it off of a notice. We would have to discuss it and approve it. So this would be the opportunity to make that decision. So if we're saying as a board, we're not going to give raises, then the, the individuals need to be aware that that's the case. And we will be voting with the salaries, um, only changing based on insurance or any other, um, uh, fringe benefit. Other than that, it wouldn't be necessary. And I would like to thank Fran because I'm pretty confident that she indicated budget on her agenda in her notice at the last strategic meetings that we had. So if we can move forward, um, Mayor, and either do the line by line or whatever process, so we can approve the items and the changes, then I think that that will be most productive. So we can move forward and, um, be able to get to our closed session before midnight.
Well, I, I mean, I think we can, but I also think that, uh, when we get into line by line items, it's going to sp- this meeting out tremendously. Uh, if you recall at the last budget, well, when we discussed the budget last, we had like a, uh, uh, what was it, three hundred dollar deficit? And, uh, and we've trimmed that down to we, to we, uh, within, um, the scope of our finances. So I, I don't understand why we, uh, are now trying to get so, um, ticky with this, with this budget.
No, I was just, I was just, um, referring to starting at the top and whatever changes need to happen at any section. There could either be a motion for it to be done, so then that will move us along. So if we start at the top, we could, you know, just go through it. It may not be line by line, but if there's a change in a section is what I'm referring to, Mayor. Then those changes can be captured and be noted for approval. And then we can move on to the other sections. So I'm just trying to, um, find a, a productive, uh, process for us to move through it.
Yeah. Uh, whatever we do, I just want you to know at this point, I think our treasurer put together a balanced budget. And, uh, I hope we don't get it out of balance. So proceed.
Mayor, this is Alda Woman Dills. Can, um, is it possible if Patrick can put it up on the screen? Um, some of the citizens is online saying that they can't see it.
And Patrick, can you put it on the screen?
Oh, let me see.
It is on the website.
There is it on the website.
On the front page where it says, uh, highlights, then it says, here's the budget. And you press that button.
I did that and the date said four seventeen twenty.
Oh, that, uh, that four seventeen twenty was a typo.
Okay.
That's when it was, uh, that's the original, uh, print date. Yeah, it didn't change based on the updates from all of the meetings we had.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
All right, uh, let's proceed with the budget.
So was the desire to go, uh, starting with the general fund budget? And, um, go through the revenue items or, um, because, because I know we've done this a number of times. I just want to make sure, know how we want to proceed.
Mayor, is it, is it possible if, um, because according to the ordinance, the mayor presents the budget to the, to the board. And if there's anything out of line, um, I guess individuals can say that right now. Or we can vote on it. If it passes, it passes. If it doesn't, then we can come back. And, you know, they can make the correction or send them to the treasurer. Your, your, your choosing.
That was, that was what I would prefer.
Let's do that.
So. Is there a motion to approve the budget?
No.
This is Alda Woman Dills. I make a motion to approve the budget for twenty twenty-one.
Actually, Mayor, this is Alda Woman Reed. I believe Alda Woman Dills is out of order when you've already assigned that ordinance to, uh, Alda Woman West. So she would be the one to, uh, introduce that bill, actually.
Right, so, so since you have, yeah.
Alda Man Thomas, or where the citizens, is this the point where the citizens will go ahead and put?
Yeah. Yeah, once we finished the budget discussion, that's where they were going to come in.
All right.
So, um, so Howard, um, where you indicated, um, reductions with personal property tax and things like that based on COVID. What exactly would the impact of COVID be on like personal property tax or real estate? Like people still living in their homes and stuff like that? So are you anticipating or the mayor anticipating that they will not be paying those? And then, um, with Prop P funds, is whatever the amount is, is the amount. So that wouldn't be reduced based on, um, COVID or anything either? Um, so.
I didn't have a, I didn't have a note for Prop P being reduced based on COVID for, uh, the property tax line. That was on the basis, uh, of an assumption that individuals would not pay, um, potentially.
But the amounts are actually the same, actually. It's a thirty-one thousand ninety-two dollars, thirty-one thousand ninety-two dollars for both. But the note says reduction due to COVID. But like, okay, so like real estate, what would be like that particular area? What would be the reason for the, those actual increases? Like what data is supporting that the trend is that they're not paying it? Or what, like cigarette, real estate, gas tax, motor vehicle, those things?
So the, um, the percentages that were communicated was as, as discussed by financial, uh, ana- uh, analysts. As a result of COVID overall, because in essence, considering that this is a, um, uh, uncertain, unclear, uncharted territory, uh, the estimation was based on potential impact. So, uh, these were based on financial forecasts from, uh, overall government, uh, entities.
Okay, so the, the Prop P where it was four hundred fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three. What, what was the four hundred and seven based off of? Because that would be the act- actual funds that come from Prop P. So that reduction is based off of the current actuals or what is that based off of? Is that something that Chief has that has a different amount? Like where did that amount come from?
Um, that amount originally, um, and I know, um, this, this is a living document that changed a number of times. That number originally was a reflection of Prop P salaries, uh, that were estimated. Uh, based on the communications myself and the chief had, um, there wasn't, uh, exact numbers. However, we use the salaries as a baseline for, um, the Prop P totals. Uh, so that, so there wasn't, wouldn't be a surplus or anything like that. But it was based on expected salaries at the time. And looking at that, I'm thinking that, uh, and I'm thinking about the conversations in the meetings. I'm thinking based on, uh, conversations, these two items weren't directly linked uh, as far as what the salaries actually are and what the, uh, Prop P funds are. Because they're, uh, historically, it's, uh, I estimated the total based off of three-year averages because technically there wasn't a, an exact amount to say, oh, um, we'd be receiving this directly. It was only, uh, a reflection of staffing. So, um, long story short, that's based on, uh, payroll related to Prop P funds.
Okay, so it's.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Avon Elliott.
Go ahead.
I, I had a question on that because Prop P does not relate to our police officer's salary at all. That was an extra, um, proposition that was passed by the voters for, um, you know, safety in the communities. We, as the city of Belfast neighbors, not when I was on the board, voted that all of that money is used for salaries for our police officers. But that has nothing to do with the amount of money we get for Prop P. And not in the last two years of me being on the board, when that prop started to come in, has it been as low as four oh seven? Your initial budget, the last one I saw, um, it had a hundred and twenty thousand more. So it was budgeted at five twenty-seven. Why did you bring it down since the Tuesday, um, budget special meeting? It didn't go down a hundred and twenty thousand. And that four oh seven does not relate back to the three something that you have down on police salaries. So I'm sorry.
Exactly, so, so I think that, that the confusion is coming in from multiple meetings and discussions. Um, because I believe that, uh, as you indicated, it was a different amount before. Uh, and then I think I've had roughly about three meetings about changing some of the same lines. Uh, that may have been one that was inadvertently changed outside of, uh, the multiple discussions.
Hmm, are we, are we discussing this budget? It says on the agenda, discuss budget for approval.
Yes.
Of course, it can be, you cannot approve it now. It's eight o'clock. It's after eight o'clock. And then we're just talking this thing together and I don't particularly know where you're going. Now, when we finish this discussion, we're going to vote this budget up or down. And it's your pleasure to do that, but I'm going to move this meeting along.
Mayor, so, um, so I think that what we're doing, because we haven't, we have had a lot of meetings, but all of them have not been with all individuals together. And there have been some changes that we're doing the part of the ordinance where the board add or take away. So then we could get to that a point where we might be passing a amended budget with the correct items indicated in there. Or we'll be making a motion to have another meeting where a clean document after these changes have been included for us to, you know, really be able to effectively evaluate. So. So based on based on those changes that have happened in era, is there a correct amount for Prop P indicate? So then when we maybe approve that section, it will be approved with that correction in there, Howard or Aldo Woman Reed?
Yeah, I mean, because if there's errors, that's why we're here to discuss that. And a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is not something to fluff that in our small budget that we have. So I'm not sure, even if the mayor understands what Prop P is and how it has been voted on in this city. So, you know, that's why we're here to talk about this. If we voted, then it wouldn't, it it wouldn't mean anything. It's not just to vote, Mayor, and then just to let it go by the wayside. We went but went through this for the last two years in getting these numbers right. If he said he used statistical numbers and statistical numbers does not relate back to four oh seven, where did that number come from? He said it relates to salary. It does not relate to salaries of the police department. So maybe you, Mayor, can speak what, where did that four oh seven come from? Oh, I see one of the residents saying you are the budget director. So if Howard can't explain it, can you explain how did you bring Prop P numbers down from five twenty seven with the last draft of the budget down to four oh seven? Where did that number come from? Since Howard doesn't know.
Well, I think Howard, you got an answer and 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 so.
And in addition to that, just assisting in in that question, I I don't, I think partial, part of the change was related to the strategic planning meeting and additional follow up meetings. So.
No, there was nothing in the strategic planning meeting to change your Prop P number because you had it as historical and we could see the historical data, how you used an average and got that five twenty seven. But four oh seven is not an average of what our Prop P has been.
Well, I'm thinking about that.
So that means we're being, it seems like there's been some little clever accounting being done. I mean, so.
No, there there's no clever.
I don't know why that number would have changed without notes right there.
No, it sounds like you guys are trying to hijack the budget and the meeting, and I wish you would do it.
I I had a question on Prop P.
Yeah, just just from, just as a clarification on accounting, there's no clever accounting taking place to manage the funds of the city. That that would not be the goal for myself as a treasurer to do anything clever to give the impression that financial results seem a certain way when the overall revenue is 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 to be used to benefit the community. So it doesn't, it doesn't benefit in no way from an accounting perspective to reduce revenue at all.
This is the, can I speak to Prop P for a minute?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's go over a little history of Prop P. So Prop P was passed in the fall twenty seventeen. The city amended the ordinance for the pay scale for the police department because they were dedicating the the bulk of those monies towards police salaries because we were having significant problems attracting by candidates for hire. So they changed the pay scale in twenty eighteen. So as with the last budget meeting we had, everybody who attended got to see firsthand, and I emailed it to everybody, how that is broken down when the general fund and the Prop P fund. So when you take the two thousand seventeen salary scale and you consider the salary, the FICA and the loggers inputs into that, and then you use the difference of that from the two thousand eighteen salary scale, logger's FICA and salaries, that difference comes from Prop P. Now, the fund itself, every year I request a twelve month study to kind of see where we are at. If you don't know, the original estimation of that account per year for our city was five hundred and forty three thousand dollars. If you look at the board, what I sent to you, you will see a study in there. It is well above par. It always has been. Problem that we are facing right now is that sales tax revenues in the region where that money comes from is in decline. That was not taken into account when I created the model for the salary, but it is sustainable for a very, very long time. If I were to put a number on it, about twenty five percent of police salaries come from the Prop P fund. Now, does anybody have any specific questions about the Prop P fund that I can answer for you?
Okay, so do you, Mayor, can I proceed?
Yes, you can.
Okay, Chief, so do you know what that amount should be based on what will come in? So we can correct that amount and go ahead and approve that section based on the change?
All right, so, okay, so Proposition P is based on.
Madam Clark, can you have someone mute their their phone? We can't hear.
I just muted. You don't still hear it, do you?
There we go.
You can hear it, Chief.
It's quiet. We're good. We're good. So Proposition P funds. We receive one check per month and they are in two month arrears. So the check that we receive in, let's say, this month of June was earned two months previous. So we really have not seen the impact as of yet on the Prop P fund. But give it about two to three more months, you will see a decline that was, it's probably going to be consistent with the remaining economics that we have discussed financially, about a fifteen to twenty percent decline. That fund will still be viable to fund police salaries for years to come. However, I will warn you, like I warned the board at the time when this was created, is that that fund specifically is not a resolve to police salary problems. It is only a temporary solution that was designed at the time to cover a span of up to ten years. It was to give the city time to explore other options of income to increase the the sal, the the cities of, you know, the financial coffers so we could, you know, fund other projects and and such. Prop P is not meant to be a forever.
Okay, so is it recommended for that hundred twenty three thousand that was referenced to be placed back in there so we can approve that section?
Well, with the cuts that I made, I will go on Patrick's recommendation because I don't have my spreadsheet in front of me. The.
Okay, what what do you need from it?
All right, so there were two, there were two positions that were last year that were suspended. I could not, that I could not occupy. So I couldn't, I couldn't hire into. So this year I did my budget like I normally do under normal circumstances that I've mentioned this several times. That way I could, we could all take a look at how much money we had as a city and make reductions there. The the money that is going back into the Prop P fund is based on the cuts probably of the two positions that I'm foregoing again this year. Patrick, am I have to ask you to speak to that because I do not have my spreadsheet in front of me?
Yes, I I missed that last piece. What did you say?
The the funds that are being, that that are going back into the Prop P fund are the funds that were initially being used for the two vacancies I was posing to fill for this year. We're going.
I muted it again. Chief, would you like me to share your your page? Would that help?
It can. I I can't. It it, it's a little bit more complicated than that. It's simple math. I just don't have it sitting in front of me. So.
Okay, tell me where to, where we need to go so we can move forward.
All right, so, yeah, bear with me. You have fifty two hundred B, B as in Bravo. All right, so you will see on on the left column, you will see a listing of positions. You will see two vacant positions on that left side. One at the top being one major positions and one at the bottom being a patrol position for one of our detectives that we were missing, which is, which was the public relations person. If you move across that spreadsheet, you look at the very top. So if you scroll, scroll your screen up to the top, you will see three sections. The left section is the general fund. That is what's coming out of the general fund based on the two thousand seventeen pay schedule, salary, FICA and loggers, and it totals it up. That middle section is what's coming from Prop P. So it's the right section, which is the total of everything, minus the general fund, equals that centerpiece, that Prop P section. That is the difference. So that is probably the number that you were talking about between those two positions on the right. I can't read it from my screen because it's not big enough. You would have to add them up yourself.
So are we taking, so from that vacant, we taking the two vacant salaries off?
Correct, yes.
Sixty thousand plus, so there's there's line nine.
Well, it's it's not accounted for as a total, like you see on the far right side. X amount is coming from the general fund and the remainder is coming from the Proposition P fund.
Hey, Chief, this Aldo Woman Reed. Actually, last year when we approved your budget, there was that major position that we said not to fill. We motioned to not fill it and also to patrol officers. So you had a thirty one man department, thirty one people in there, including your admins and your evidence manager. So there was twenty one at that time. Today you have, you have actually thirty two people in that department. So you're more than what your department ever had before at thirty one today. So how are you?
Full staff or just commissioned police officers?
I'm talking about full staff, including the two clerks and the evidence manager, yourself and all of your commissioned officers under you. There's thirty two people now, whereas last year we had voted for you to have twenty nine. So you were under, you know, two at that time. But now you have thirty two today, so it's not like you're really withholding that major spot in that extra officer because your department only had thirty one positions when I got on the board. So Avon Elliott, if you go over to the left in this B form, there's more than thirty one positions listed here. If you go down to the bottom or the, yeah, so there's thirty one officers plus three non commissioned people. So you have thirty four people now.
Correct.
In the in the police department, whereas there was only twenty nine last year. So.
The only vacancies I had the time were those two.
You had two officers and Apple, I mean, the major position. Twenty one use a person's name, sorry.
Oh, I understand. I I only remember the two positions. One of the problems we had last year, and I am not pointing fingers at anybody, but I was, I was not included on any budget discussions that actually told me what was being cut from my budget. I kind of heard it third hand. And at the time, I only had two vacant positions. I know that for sure. So those two, those two positions I had left vacant. I had no choice because that's through the grapevine of what I was told. So for this budget, all I did was re-budget them and through negotiation, just took them out of the budget again because I knew the city couldn't afford it.
Okay, so so right now you saying if we take out the amount for line nine and twenty and twenty eight, that should give us amount for Prop P. I apologize for the static. I don't know why it does that. Is that what you're saying, Chief? So we can move on with that?
So for for the, I can't read the lines, but the two vacant positions, on the first set is the general revenue port. The total in the general revenue part will will reduce the general revenue and the total in the Prop P part for those two positions will, that total will reduce that amount and add that back into the Prop P fund.
Okay, so is there any other changes to the to the income area?
I beg your pardon?
I was just trying to see if there was any other changes to the income part because I was going to make a motion if you, if you allowed me to. So we can do that section by section.
I mean, since we're on, we're on Chief's budget, we, since we're saying that we're not going to do any increases, I know your B included your increases that Miranda was just showing. But A, still had people in there that was actually being given increases. Can you speak to these people? Because it looks like Dunn was our, was a detective last year and now his salary is, his salary actually is one that actually went down from last year to this year. Why would you have budgeted him down that eight hundred and twenty dollars that you get in addition for being a detective?
That may have been a typo. Per ordinance that eight hundred and twenty dollars is given to detectives because it is the IRS rule. We cannot give them a uniform allowance based on the clothing that they wear. If they were uniforms, then yes, we can give clothing allowance per our budget. Since they were normal clothes, the IRS says we have to actually give them money for that. So the ordinance.
Yeah, I understand that, but his salary actually went down by that eight hundred and twenty. Is Dunn not your detective anymore?
No, he's still the detective, yes.
Right, so his salary went down based on your fifty two hundred A, and it went down by that detective.
I I think there was a typographical error. There's a lot of mathematics involved in that. It's 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 all programmed, at least most of it is. And I I think it was double counted last year by accident. So that money that was budgeted wasn't spent. It wasn't like.
Oh, okay.
Eight hundred dollars and sixteen hundred, you know, one thousand six hundred forty dollars. He only received his a lot amount of eight twenty.
Okay, gotcha. And then Johnson, he actually went up a thousand dollars. But if no one was going up a step, why would he go up?
So again, when I did my budget and I told everybody through previous meetings, I I did my budget like I normally would do every year under normal circumstances and then reduce it all from there. I already made clear that I knew we were coming up on hard financial times. So I wanted to do a budget that I would normally do and then make cuts from there based on, based on all the factors that I had in front of me. I I there's, there's, it's not possible to put a partial budget together in anticipation of what the budget committee wants.
Okay, so if the mayor, being your your leader, said that there would be no increases, no promotions, when I hear no raises, no increases, I'm hearing no promotions, no step increases, all of that is synonymous. I'm assuming that's what the mayor meant. That with him being your leader, why then would you have left five people with getting increases? You should have prepared the budget. You should have prepared the budget as last year. So, I mean, I have Dee Sanders and Shaq and Wheels that are all going up in salary when no other people in the city are going up in salaries. Why would you pick particular people in your department to go up and none of the other departments have done that?
I am the only one that prepares a budget for the city as a department head, as far as I'm aware.
Yeah. Well, I, I mean, still, if the leader said there was going to be no increases, why, why would these five people get some increases? That's what I'm trying to get to. Were those just mistakes on your part? Should they be brought down or, or what?
If the budget committee chooses not to give them their merit raises, and that's what the budget, budget committee chooses to do.
Okay. So you did, you did purposely leave those as merit raises. That was intentional. That's what I'm asking.
I, I put everything in there as normal and the budget committee decides what they want in there and what they don't. And we, we discuss it as to the importance of it, like vehicles, for example, and anything else that would be in that budget that would be considered flexible. If the budget committee decided, listen, there are nobody, there's nobody in your department that are going to get merit raises, then that would been the case. I don't make that decision.
Okay. That, that is, okay.
So Mayor, I guess I'm going to direct that to you, Mayor. Are you actually asking for no one to get increases, wages, and promotions? Are you, are you suggesting for these five officers to actually get increases but no one else in the city to?
Departments put together their own budget. That's what we asked them to do and that's what they did. Alda Woman Dales, what was your comment?
That, that was my question as well, Mayor. The Chief said the budget committee, so I'm assuming that he's speaking of you and Patrick. And I'm sure that everyone in the city was crystal clear that there would be no increases. And based on what Alda Woman Reed said, I totally agree with the fact that there would be chosen certain people out of the police department to get increases because if he changed his budget like he did last year, everyone would have got one. So specifically, there are certain people that's getting it and I don't think that's fair. I think that should be taken out. No one across the board should be receiving the increase and everyone is aware of that. And I do totally agree with Alda Woman Reed. He should not have put that, that information in there.
This is Alda Woman West. This is Alda Woman West. My comment is when you do a budget, you put in what you are asking for. Once you do that, it's up to the board to decide whether or not to approve it or reject it. It's that simple. You don't put decreases in, you put what you want in your budget.
This budget was, and I thank you for that. This budget was put together based on current events and future projections that taxes were going to go to increase. I mean, the monies that we see were going to go down. We all know that. It's predicted everywhere with stay-home orders and people are not rushing out to buy anything. And so the budget was put together based on the information that we have. I think it's a good budget. I think it need to be passed tonight or rejected and not talked to them. I don't know what, I don't know what Dr. May and Dr. Reed has in mind, but it, it does not benefit the city for us to be nitpicking and, and I don't specifically understand what you're doing and then trying to put words in my mouth. We asked the department people to send us a budget. That's what they did and that's what we're working on. So without, if there are no further discussions, then I need someone to move to either pass the budget or reject it.
Mayor, Mayor, this is Alda Woman Dales. I just have one question. Can we please remove the increases for the policemen and then move on for that line item? Is that possible?
We're not going to remove anything from this budget tonight. If whatever, whatever adjustment this budget need, we will do it in a budget committee meeting after you reject it, if that's what you're going to do. But we're not going to pull stuff out for anybody and, and put things in for anybody. So I would like to have a motion to pass the budget. You can vote it up or down.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, yes. Just for a point of clarification, this is a normal process for the board to do this in order for it to be correct. So it's the ordinance that I referenced last week. So it's no personal agenda except for it to be correct and we've already indicated that there are some errors. So when we get ready to get an audit, there will be concerns when we have to do a whole bunch of amendments because we didn't properly vet our budget during this period. So I was, if we want to make a decision on no raises, then maybe there can be a motion for that. So can I make a motion for that and then the board can decide on that and that will help with some of the adjustments? Can I make a motion on whether or not there will be staff raises? Mayor?
I want to approve or reject this budget and not pick it apart, given some people raises, some not raises, whatever we have in mind or you don't have in mind. Let's move it and if you reject it, then we'll come together and see if we can't make it better.
So, you know, the, the budget deadline for approval is on the 30th. So we are trying to use this meeting to make those changes before we have to come back again and then still make those changes. So is it your pleasure as the manager of the city to not give raises so I can make it official and do a board vote? That's what I was asking.
Well, the budget, the budget will not allow us to get raises. So it's not me not wanting to give anybody a raise.
Well, I mean, it, it would allow, it would allow for it.
Then we'd be, then we'd be, we'll really be running a deficit another year from now if we did that. Be responsible.
Okay. I will make a, I would like to make a motion. Okay.
I have a question. I've been listening. I have two questions. Number one, I'm listening to all of the consternations about the budget. I think we went through this the last meeting, which was good discussions. We, we're looking at a budget that seems to be in line with our current events. So this budget discussion is, we're, we're going back through again. I think we, we asked the mayor and our treasurer at the last meeting to go back because of the large amount that we were in the red. And so every department was asked to present a budget for what they wanted, which is just a projection. If we're going through now, we all discussed about if there were going to be raises, if there weren't going to be raises. The budget as it sits shows that the budget is in line now. So are we going to go back through and make several changes where it may not be a budget that will reflect our current events, number one. Number two, point of clarification is, how are we as a board? And I'm, I'm trying to put this in a diplomatic way. How are we going to spend time going through this budget to take off these things? So I think we've had this budget for how long? How many days?
A handful.
About three or four days. And this is just a statement and I'm going to be quiet for a minute, I think. I think it would have been more advantageous for us as a team that any questions that we now have, that we have plenty of time to bring those things up, not waiting till tonight where we are exhaustively going over things that we could have gone over three or four days ago. I thought that's why we get this information early. I want to commend our city clerk for doing that. I went through the budget too. I had my questions and I called and got them answered. So that's why I've been silent because the questions I had, I looked at the budget early and got it done. So that's, that's my part. I'm, I'm just, I'm through. So I think that we ought to make a determination because our citizens do want to chime in, give them an opportunity to have an input. And we, I agree, need to, but vote this budget up or vote it down and we'll start all over again.
Mayor Harrison, this Alda Woman Reed. Actually, Alda Woman Tatman, we got this budget yesterday, June 24th at 4:14 PM. So, and to be frank, I sent my adjustments in via email because it's in writing and I like to have things in writing. So they've gotten them, but none of the changes were made or even addressed during your meeting when I couldn't attend. So that's why we're here. And I'm sorry that you weren't here a couple years ago or maybe wasn't here for the last budget. We did go through this and I don't want to actually have the bill fail. What we did then was actually table the bill because there's no point in having our attorney redraft this bill and pay for it to be redrafted again when all we have to do is table it and come back with the changes. That's what we've done before. I mean, but we, I got this yesterday at 4:14 and that's, your name is on this email as well. And I've been through this budget actually four times this year already. That's part of the job, you know, is being a public servant, I think, you know, with this budget is for us all to be able to voice what we think should be in there and should not and the things that are different. And I still believe wholeheartedly that it's unfair for some to get increases, some to not get increases. I think it's wrong that the Medicare numbers are not in line. I think it's wrong that there's rec salaries that's put into general fund that should actually be in capital improvement when they were there last year. Why are we putting funds that can only be used for the rec center and capital things in the city? Why are, why are we burdening the general fund with those types of things? Why isn't our CBD grant being reflected in the revenue dollars for this year when we voted just last week to have that included in here? Why are we still budgeting for the salt shed when a salt shed was paid for? We just voted on that tonight to pay the last bill to Chris Van. Why are we still budgeting another $60,000 for that? Why are we budgeting for vehicles in the police department and capital funds when we can't afford that? Another $100,000 that should be taken out of our budget. There's a lot of things that are going on that shouldn't be there. Why are we taking out traffic monitoring devices when you are set on the public safety board and wanted that in there? But this year, Chief has decided, Chief or the mayor or the budget committee, which includes the mayor, the treasurer, and chief, decided to take that out this year. When that was a hard fight from the residents last year, but we're going to put in $100,000 for vehicles but not do anything about speeding, nothing for traffic devices. So I have a long list that I wanted to go through tonight and all of us are sitting here majority. Unfortunately, Christian is not feeling well, but we're here and that's what we should be here to do is to get to a consensus where this budget is right and we all feel good about it, you know, where we can vote right about it. So the same thing we did when you bring things to us, when you wanted the Bell Found Family Fest, when you wanted to do COVIDs, we all came together to, to look at that and voted how we felt. That's what this is, but not to reject it and let it fail and have the, have the attorney redraft it. We can just table it.
And that's a good idea. And your comment concerning the traffic devices, all the things, we went through this with the last meeting. That, that wasn't something that was hidden. When we went through the line items, that was brought up and it was agreed that it be taken out as well as, I think the Chief even took out $94,000, $98,000 for two cars. But I'm not going to exacerbate this. I think we ought to spend time to do what we're going to do. And as far as public service, we're not going to even speak to that.
Yeah. But I mean, you had us draft three ordinances last year on those, you know, speed bumps and different things to help with traffic in the city. But now you want to take out $5,000 to help that? That doesn't make sense for us. I agree with you on that.
And I appreciate that. So that's what we're talking about. Looking at our present conditions and make a consensus of what we're going to do.
Mayor, I've been trying to make a motion based on the board being the entity that can approve whether or not salaries are increased or not. Can I, can I make that a motion so then that will be a part of our consideration with the amendments that will need to take place? May I make that motion?
I'm not, what is?
I was going to make a motion that salaries be frozen for the 19, for the 2021 fiscal year.
All right. Is there a second to the motion?
One, and Dales, I'll second that.
Are there any further discussion? Wrong call, please.
Alda Man Carol?
Yes.
Alda, Alda Woman?
Yes.
Alda Woman Avon Elliott?
Yes.
Alda Woman Reed?
Yes.
Alda Man Thomas?
Yes.
Alda Woman Tatman? Alda Woman Tatman? Alda Woman Dales?
I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry, I was muted. What was the question, please? I'm sorry. I, I was muted.
The motion was on the floor to, to freeze salaries for, for the 2021 fiscal year.
Yeah.
Alda Woman Dales?
You have to vote on it.
Alda Woman Dales? You're muted.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, yes, Mayor.
Okay.
Okay. So based, based on those changes, Alda Woman Reed, what, is there income changes that we can vote on at this time that you have?
I'm sorry, can you refer?
No, I was just saying the income changes, are there any that we can vote on this section at this time that you have that we can make a motion for?
Yeah, no, it was all just the Prop P was brought down, so.
So that's the part that needs to potentially be adjusted or we leave the same and make amendment later. So that's the, okay, that's the only change. Mayor, if I can make a motion to approve all of the income adjustments on, on the budget?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that motion so I can write it down.
I'm, I'm making a motion to approve all of the income that's budgeted for the 2021 fiscal year with the removal of the comment, 3% reduction due online for 006.1 for personal property tax because there was no change. So I would like to make a motion to approve the amended section. Just, I, I guess that comment don't have to be a motion for. So I'm just making a motion to approve all of the income for the 2021 fiscal year, all of the projected income.
You mean, or the general fund?
Under the general fund, under the general fund, all of the, the reflected income for the 2021 budget.
Is there a second? Is there a second? No second.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
They was on mute. It was on mute.
Yeah, um, I'll second, uh, Reed.
Are there any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Uh, Alda Woman Avant Elliott.
Yes.
Alda Woman West. Alderman Carol.
Yes.
Alda Woman Reed.
Yeah.
Alderman, Alda Woman Tatman, I'm sorry. Alda Woman Tatman. Alderman Thomas. Alda Woman Dale's.
Yes.
Did you say yes? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, Alda Woman Tatman. Alderman Thomas, he's muted. And I can't unmute him. So.
Brad, he's working, he's working, so.
Open.
Okay. What'd you say, Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. Tatman, are you there? I guess she's gone. One, two, three, four, five, six. I have six yes, Mayor, one absent and one no answer.
Okay.
Hello, I'm back. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, y'all. I have to keep going back and forth. Um, was there a roll call?
Yes.
Okay, yes. I wasn't initially gonna be on this call, because I had another one, if you guys remember, so I'm going back and forth. I'll try to be more attentive to all three.
Yeah, I'll say yes.
Okay.
Okay, Mayor, if, if I may, um, we should be at, um, expenses, beginning with administration. And there, there may be where some of the adjustments will be made from the recommendations that had not been included. Um, so can we entertain the changes at this time, so then we can vote on that section as well?
A change, a change in what? What changes?
We're on the expense, we're on the expense section. So, um, I don't know who all has submitted something. I know Alda Woman Reed submitted something. I don't know who else has submitted something, or if the, all of these changes have already been, um, documented.
Can you restate your motion?
Well, I was, I was trying to get the changes made, so I could make a motion. Are there any changes to the, um, expense section?
You asking me or you?
I was asking, I was trying to ask the board to see if there was any changes to that section. Have everything been captured based on the review?
Yeah, um, uh, Chief, I understand that your, um, your spreadsheet actually, you know, gave back money to Prop P. But as far as the way that it was, you know, approved by the previous board, was that all Prop P money was supposed to go to police salaries? So if we're actually budgeting, uh, four oh seven, and this is between you and Treasurer Howard, if we're budgeting four oh seven for the revenue, there should be four oh seven budgeted for Prop P salaries for police. All right, Chief.
Well, well, that's, that's not something I actually can answer right here at this moment. I'm gonna have to look over all the numbers to, to give you some, give me some clarity before that give you an answer. Um, all I tell you is, is that, uh, originally when this was designed, it was, um, the majority of that money was allocated toward police sal- salaries to, number one, retain the police officers that we do have, and to add new ones and diversify our department. Um, as for the actual specific numbers that you're stating, I'm gonna actually have to look at them and get back with you.
Okay. Got you. Um, Howard, um, actually, your, um, Medicare numbers are actually like really high. Is there a reason why you're rounding it up rather than using a seven six five percent, seven point six five percent?
I can adjust that to reflect the, uh, percentage instead of rounding.
Okay. And then you have, is there a reason why you put the rec center salaries, increased it to sixty thousand on this new, um, on this new draft? And reduced it over in capital? I mean, the rec centers, the majority of their salaries has always come out of capital improvement.
Uh, I'm, I'm jumping in to, to look at what you're referring to. Let's see. You said a hundred and sixty thousand here for the salaries?
In the rec center. It increased sixty thousand, but it reduced in capital.
Uh, that was, the adjustment was a reflection of actual, for the current year.
Because you have to make a, uh, an adjustment. You have to make a, uh, adjusting entry to actually move the salaries into capital improvement, right?
Correct.
And that probably has not happened yet in the year of nineteen twenty, right?
So, not, not as in, in, uh, for the entire amount. So in the previous budget, it had an amount for two hundred and five thousand. So you're saying, so the, uh, the, the last budget, that was incorrect as well?
No, we, okay, so the last budget would have a lot of the lifeguards and the part-time people that we would have for the summer.
Uh huh.
So we would split up those salaries between general and capital improvement. So we can still have the same amount to come out of capital improvement. It doesn't all have to now come out of general.
Okay.
You know, capital improvement can pretty much only be used for capital things in the city, like the, um, the street department or the rec center, because everything they do is capital improvement within the city.
Okay.
So that's why we always.
Yeah, I can make that adjustment. I think part, part of that was based on what, what the previous approved budget had in QuickBooks. Uh, I think it was in both spaces.
But since now that we're not opening up our pool and stuff like that, you know, it would be lesser amounts now.
Right, right. And majority of that will be reflected in the part-time salaries.
Right, and I'm talking, I'm sorry, I am talking about the part-time salary.
Okay.
And, um, so for Police Chief's line fifty-two twenty-four, I asked for that to be reduced down to three thousand.
Are you, are you in the capital improvement fund now, or?
No, I'm sorry, I'm in general, still in general.
Okay.
And that's the line item for, uh, community, community, um, involvement. And this year he spent less than three thousand. So we had decided, we had talked that if we're gonna go off of historical data, that we can keep that at three thousand this year, rather than to rebudget it for five thousand. When I looked at Chief's budget, he didn't have anything detailed out in that to spend five thousand. And we're probably not gonna be.
That's line item fifty-two twenty-four?
Fifty-two twenty-four.
Yeah. Uh, if I may make, make comment, that's the community outreach budget. So the issue with that in, in my budget in particular, because I use a lot of historical data, I use formulas and I use, uh, science and mathematics, this budget does not work that way because of the economic impact that we are facing. So, uh, because half of our fiscal year was covered by Covid, we only spent about half of that money. So I'm gonna leave it up to, you know, the board to discuss with the budget committee on how much money should be put into that fund, uh, for the coming year. We already know that there is an issue, um, being caused by Covid, and it's gonna spring back up here in the fall. So I don't know how much of that money we're gonna be able to allocate to the community in community projects because of the virus issue. Uh, so I'm just gonna leave it there for discussion.
Right. So did you, I mean, so reducing it two thousand still gives you three thousand, you know, for hopefully twenty twenty-one, the spring and summer part of that, the first six months.
And, and that's fine. If you were comfortable with that, that's, I'm gonna leave that up to everybody else.
Uh, and, and, uh, just, just for my sake, because I know, um, you know, a message of, of updates or reductions. So once the board has decided on reducing a line item, is that, should that just be adjusted in that manner and then bring it back to be voted? Just so that I don't have to, uh, so that we don't keep going through double steps doing this.
Right. So what I was gonna do after all my changes, I would make a motion to see if they agree.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Yeah.
Cause, cause, yeah, yeah, cause I'm just checking, cause I know, you know, when we did it the first time, the changes were made then, you know, we had to go back and revert and discuss it again. So I just wanna make sure it's not going back for.
Right. Yeah. I understand. So, um, and Chief, on fifty-two twenty-nine, Promotions Assessment Center, you have always, um, you've had that at zero. We've never used that line historically in the last three years.
Uh, actually, that is, uh, not true. So, uh, according to, I'll say, we do promotions every two years, and it's based on accreditation standards. Uh, normally, um, we had, uh, hired an outside firm to do that, and it's very expensive. Uh, I did not pre- cost. Uh, we found something that was just as, uh, beneficial and extremely cost-effective, and I dropped it down to five hundred dollars. Uh, and that's you, it's basically just for the cost of physical testing materials. Uh, everybody else, everything else that's used in that process, we have, uh, created partnerships with other police departments to facilitate the remainder of the promotions process. So, uh, in the past, we went from probably about four thousand dollars every time we did it, down to about five hundred, I believe, in this budget. Uh, I, and I think that is, uh, cost-worthy and very beneficial.
That's interesting, cause I have this list from Bill Krenn, who was our treasurer for a number of years before Howard, and he said that that had never been used. Um, I thought you used that certification, the law enforcement certification program for, um, promoting your officers or not.
Okay, so, okay, now, now I'm a little bit confused. You, you mentioned promotions. Promotions and the law enforcement certification program are, are distinctly two different. The, the certification program is, uh, what, about sixteen hundred dollars and some change? Their annual bill to the accreditation program. And every three years, we are assessed and audited and re-accredited based on our audit. So I do not know, and I cannot attest for Bill Krenn's accounting methods.
Okay.
And I'm gonna leave it at that, but I can tell you, we are still in the accreditation program.
Okay. So the promotions assessment is gonna happen this year, twenty twenty-one? And you're, and you're going to use the law enforcement certification program this year? Because I believe last year you cut that from your budget and you said you could do it internally. You're with your neighboring, neighboring chiefs or whatever.
Right, that was the previous budget year. So every two years, we do promotions. So that's why I, I discontinued the use of a third party to facilitate all that. And now we do it, um, it's not in-house per se, so we do the written portion in, in-house. But the interviews and the remainder of it, we, we use a, uh, collective-like mutual aid agencies that we kind of share resources to do that. So that brought that cost down from four thousand, I believe, down to five hundred.
Okay.
Anyone else? So are we ready to proceed?
Oh, Mayor, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mayor. Um, fifty-five, fifty-five eleven. Yeah. Fifty-five eleven, though, uh, Mayor.
I'm taking notes based off of what you recommended. Um, and, and what I have thus far was to adjust the rec center salaries to, uh, the capital improvement and line the, um, the police department's adjustment for community services to be reduced by two thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, oh, and that Prop P to reflect properly what is earned should be what's expensed for salaries.
Yeah, you're right. So, so you mean the salary section to be updated to reflect the revenue item?
Yeah, that's how it's in the ordinance, yeah.
Right, yeah. I'm just making that clear, so I don't do it the other way.
Yeah. Yeah, and, um, that last one I had was fifty-five eleven, that equipment right here for the rec center. That should be in capital improvement. And so, um, I wanted to make a motion for my suggested changes, what Treasurer Howard just said, including this twelve thousand to be moved to the capital improvement plan. That's my motion for those changes on expenses in the general fund.
Is there a second?
Second, Avant Elliott.
Are there any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Yeah, I, I got, I got a question, Mayor.
Go right ahead.
I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about the, um, building department. Um, and this is, this is more, more so a comment as opposed to a question. Um, there's been a lot of complaints. I mean, I've only been in office for about two weeks now, and I'd say, um, about ninety percent of the, the, uh, conversations I've had with, 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 with people are, are regarding the, uh, lack of enforcement, or they feel like the lack of enforcement by the building department. And so I took it upon myself to kind of research that, um, how many citations were actually being issued by the building department? And from, I believe it was, uh, April first of two thousand and nineteen until February twenty-ninth of two thousand twenty, there's, uh, been maybe twenty, and I'm giving him a lot. Um, if, 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 if the building inspector isn't gonna enforce, maybe we could just go down to a part-time building inspector. And I don't expect that to happen on, on this year's budget, but I think we need to be paying attention to that on the next year's budget, because like I said, you know, I think that's probably half of his job. And there's also a part, you've got a full-time building inspector and a part-time building inspector. There's no reason, twenty citations for, for property maintenance. It's only twenty, twenty citations for property maintenance, uh, citations have been issued. So as a board, I'd like for us to be paying attention to that in the upcoming year, and maybe we could just go down to a, a part-time building inspector just, uh, inspect for occupancy permits. Unless somebody wants to start enforcing those ordinances. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now may I get that motion again, so I can report it out?
What, what motion are you firing?
Motion that I was getting ready to do the roll call on that. Uh, Alda Woman Reed made a motion, and Avant Elliott second.
Uh, Alda Woman Reed, would you restate your motion for clarification for the clerk?
Thank you.
Sure. Um, it's a motion to approve the changes in the general fund expenses to make sure that Prop P funds is reflected properly, um, in the expenses on fifty-two oh two point one.
Oof, okay. Fifty-two point.
Cut them off.
And fifty-two twenty-four is reduced by two thousand.
Is that the same motion you made prior?
Mm-hmm. Alderman, um, Howard, I'm sorry, Treasurer Howard actually stated these.
All right, roll call vote.
Well, I was waiting to hear that she got it all. Um, it was fifty-five eleven to be moved to, um, capital improvement, twelve thousand.
All of this is in the mo- All of this is in the motion?
There was four lines, and Howard can concur.
Okay.
And it was the rec center's part-time salary of sixty thousand to be moved to capital. It was those four things. Howard, is that what you have?
Yes, that's correct. That's what I have.
Thank you.
Call you tomorrow, Howard. Okay, shall I do the roll call now, mayor?
Yes, you may.
Okay.
I'm sorry, mayor, for the question.
Go right ahead.
Um, I was just trying to get clarification if we were, uh, going to do all of the expenses or we were stopping at a certain point, because I know that, um, there was discussion about, uh, the city manager's salary that I don't know if, if it was included in there. So I'm just trying to see if all the changes have been indicated for this particular section we're about to vote on. What, what are we voting on at this time? Is it gonna be, are we gonna, are we finished with all the expenses in general, or is just those few?
Oh, um, I was just asking for those changes.
Okay. Okay. So.
Go right ahead with the clarification.
No, I, I, I heard, uh, Miranda mention something about the city manager's salary. That's not something we voted on. Why would we put it in the budget?
Um, wha- what part didn't we vote on?
We didn't vote on a salary for the administrator. We voted on the pay scale and the ordinance, but we did not vote to add that particular person or administrative part to our staff.
So this is a budget meeting, so that's where that will happen, because we have a ordinance in place for that person. And in fact, it states, whereas the complexity, risks, and financial constraints pressing upon local governments have never been greater than they are before, whereas the challenges of maintaining the quality of critical services in the face of diminishing resources and increasing demands for accountability and transparency make the need for efficient, responsive, and professional leadership more important than ever. That was the ordinance twenty-four eighteen establishing the city administrator.
And, I'll repeat, we did vote on the pay scale for that particular person. So my point of clarification was, until we vote on adding that particular line item, I guess my clarification was, for that position, because that is a position that's appointed by the mayor with approval by, um, the board.
Okay, mayor, I have no further questions. Thank you.
All right, uh, we will, uh, move to vote, roll call vote on the motion that was presented.
Okay. Alda Woman West.
Yes.
Alda Woman Reed.
Yes.
Alda Woman Tatman.
Alderman. That's the communication outreach budget from the police department.
Women, I'm sorry, wasn't it? Alderman Thomas. Alderman Carol.
Can you restate the motion?
It's a restate motion somewhere, want a clarification?
That will be Alda Woman Reed. That's her motion.
No, it's, it's her motion, but don't, didn't you write the motion down?
I wrote some of it. She said a lot. Motion to approve changes in general funds to fifty-two oh-two point one, fifty-two twenty-four, reduce something, fifty-five eleven, move to capital improvement, the rec center part-time salary moved to general. And she says some more stuff I was gonna have to listen to.
To capital improvement, actually.
Oh, the rec part-time salary moved to capital improvement?
But, but the city manager's salary wasn't included in that motion, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. No.
Alda Woman Avant.
Yes.
Alda Woman Dales. Okay, mayor, you have three noes and four yeses.
All right, what, what's, what's next?
They were discussing the budget approval, so.
So the next, what, what, what section have we not gone over? So are we, okay, so we finished with the general fund? Okay, um, so I would like to make a motion for, um, the general fund to be, um, the expenses to be accepted as amended.
Does that mean you're approving the budget, uh, just?
The entire general fund would be now completely approved.
No.
For the expenses. We did the income, so we, we finished with the expenses for general fund, correct? Alda Woman Reed, wasn't it?
Well, I thought that this is telling Treasurer Howard what we agreed on, and now he would make the changes, you know, properly for himself. I mean, I see the changes, but everybody here hasn't seen it, the board. So let's just, we, we motioned for him to make the changes.
Okay, so, but I'm saying that would it not be a?
Let him make the changes.
Okay, let him make the changes, but we're making the changes, and we're accepting the expenses with the changes, correct? Okay, so that's why I was doing a motion to accept the, um, the budget with amended changes, because that was just a motion for the changes. I didn't, we didn't make a motion to approve it as amended.
No, let, let him make those changes, and then the entire board, he will send another document out, so they all can see it.
Okay, okay, so we may be.
We done, we done with that. Let this go into capital.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. Okay, capital fund, mayor, um, the income.
No, that's your grandma. You can drink some water.
I can't.
Did you set room?
Kind of see, the capital profit and loss. So, um, the revenue, I mean, we can look at this in totality. There's just two pages. Um, I, I had that, that salt shed, we just paid the last bill of that salt shed in the over five hundreds that all of the board got already. So that sixty thousand has been, um, budgeted for in fifty, fifty, fifty-six. That can be removed. And, um, Patrick, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, sorry, I just wanna make sure you were still there. Um, and then, um, the, um, that, that fifty-three oh-three point seven, we had a hundred and fifty thousand for the pool, but you added another seventy thousand for the roof. Um, we actually just did patchwork on the roof. I'm not sure if you were here. I think you are, but we just patched up their roof. So why would we be paying sixty thousand this year? Can that not be moved to the twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two budget? Cuz we have to do the pool this year, but we just did the, the gym roof.
Alda Woman Dales, um, I think they patched it up, which means that we may have to repair the roof. So I think that's why that fund was in there. I'm sure that those in the rec center can comment on that, but we don't wanna not have it and need a complete roof. So, um, I think Amy or Mark is on here, but it was just a patch-up job. So it probably will need repair, uh, uh, a total on the roof. And actually, Mark has been saying that for years, that we do need to replace the roof. Well, Mark Dickerson, who is no longer here, has been saying for years that we do need to replace the roof. That's why we're constantly patching it up.
Well, I had only seen the patches this year since I've been here for two years, but seventy seems really steep for that gym roof only, but Amy maybe can talk to it. I'm not sure if Amy is still there. I can't see her.
I am.
Hey, I can hear you, Amy.
Okay, yes, the roof.
Where did that seventy come from? Was, was that like, um?
No, that was from, an estimate from the company that patched the roof. Um, and of the roof was repaired in, uh, February or March, and had to be repaired again in, mm, uh, June. It has to be replaced. It's not gonna be stable.
Okay. And, and that was the one bid you got, okay?
Okay.
Okay. I was just wondering. If I had, that wasn't in the budget before, maybe that's something you got laid on.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I had already mentioned the sixty thousand to do, um, patch it. And, um, I believe with everything going on, and the police department actually just getting cars just now for that we budgeted last year, I believe we can budget for their cars in twenty-one, twenty-two. So line, um, fifty-four oh-one for ninety-six thousand three hundred. Um, I, I would motion for that to be removed, and we would resume purchasing cars in twenty-one, twenty-two.
And, um,
I would like to make a comment, please.
And. Can I, can I finish, please? And then?
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just giving my suggestions, and then you cancel them.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, um, fifty-four twenty-two, uh, the equipment maintenance, where it's only ninety-one. Initially, it was, um, fifteen thousand. Um, it's the trafficking monitoring devices, like says, there has been removed. Um, we've heard so many complaints about that time after time. Um, I think that should be, um, put back in. So it's just increasing it to fifteen thousand, so it's four thousand nine hundred that would be increased. And I guess before making my motion, um, I, I'll go ahead, Tatman.
Okay, um, when we went up the budget at the last meeting, we had agreed that, and I think the chief agreed to forego two cars,
I'm sorry, Alda Woman Tatman, it's, it's hard hearing you. A couple words are coming in, and a couple are out.
Let me finish, please. Let me finish, please.
Oh, no, I was telling you I couldn't hear you. I couldn't hear you.
Okay. Okay, let me turn my volume up. I'm sorry. Um, what I'm saying is, our last meeting, we agreed, um, to forego two police cars. So are we saying now that we're foregoing all four cars? And also the community engagement piece from our police department to then move that money over to take care of repairs or roof for the rec center? I'm trying to get clarification. Anybody can answer.
Uh, sorry. Yeah, that, that was my suggestion, but we did not take out community development. We just reduced it by two thousand. So there's still three thousand, um, and to put back in the traffic monitoring devices. I mean, right now, we have a full fleet. You know, we have a full fleet. We just got four new cars. We're three brand-new. We got one used one. And I'm only saying one, one more year, you know, one twelve months, and we can start resuming purchasing vehicles again. You know, not a forever plan.
Okay, and can I also make a suggestion? In this climate that we're in, I think it's very important, and that's why we created Hearts Behind the Badges, that we not strip the police department from money, cuz it actually is gonna take more. If we're talking about building relationships between our officers and our citizens, that we should at least have a little bit more and not take away from that. Um, and I thank you for the traffic devices. I think, like you said, we're offering up everything we can. But I think that community engagement piece ought to be one of the most important areas because of the given climate, where we can start building relationships and, and not strip that. So I just wanted to make that comment, that I think we should keep that at five thousand dollars.
This is Alda Woman West. I agree with Alda Woman Tatman. Uh, the police department, in my opinion, is the only department that gives year after year on their budget. They always try to, uh, decrease anything that they can, and I don't feel that cutting their budget would be in the best interest of the city. And that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Are there any other comments, opinions?
No, mayor, I just wanted to make my motion for those changes. Let me see where it falls.
Go ahead and make, make your motion. Have you made it?
No, not yet, sir. So, um, I wanted to make a motion, uh, for the following.
Can't hear you.
Can you hear me, Fran?
Better now, yes.
Okay, to make a motion for the following changes in the capital improvement budget to remove fifty-fifty-six, the salt shed of sixty thousand as it's paid for as of today. And to, uh, fifty-four oh-one, the cars for police to be reduced to zero and to resume purchasing cars in twenty-one, twenty-two. Fifty-four twenty-two, equipment maintenance to be increased by four thousand nine hundred for trafficking monitoring devices.
Or four thousand what?
Nine hundred.
Okay.
That's my motion for those changes.
Is there a second?
Second, Avant Elliott.
Question, please?
Are there, are there any further discussion?
Yes, sir. May I, mayor?
Yes, you can.
Yes, thank you. Um, I wanna stress again, I think because we have all these divergent areas of the budget, that we should separate some of these things, because all of them are lumped together. Some of them in this line item I agree with, others don't. I don't feel comfortable, uh, in totality, when there's still questions about certain ones and the others. Um, because I, I, I agree, um, again. We're asking our police department, who gives heavily, and, and doing the same thing this year. Um, uh, it's the only department that's offering up hefty cuts in their budget. During the climate that we're in, and I know what you said about two cars, but we're talking about four now. That's a, a thing I don't agree in, and I don't feel comfortable voting on the motion in totality when there's questions about individual line items. Can we separate those?
You have the right, according to Robert's rules, to amend the motion. I agree. To separate the two or three and amend it to what you feel it should be, then we can vote on the rest of it. Thank you.
And that's what I wanted to do, but I wanted to make sure I wasn't the only one. But I'm, I'm, thank you. That's what I would like to make a motion to separate. Um, the items pertaining to the police department.
What about it?
From the motion. I'm sorry.
I don't.
Is there a second?
I'm not sure I understand the motion.
But I also have a question.
I didn't have, I didn't understand the motion. I was trying to hear it.
Did you repeat the motion?
Yes, sir. I was making a motion to separate the line item pertaining to the police cars and the line item pertaining to community engagement from the motion that, uh, Alderwoman Reed put forth.
Just, uh, mayor, a point of clarification, I don't think that the community engagement was just in her motion. She said, um, fifty-fifty, fifty-four oh one and fifty-four twenty-two.
Uh, would you clarify your, uh, motion, uh, Alderwoman Reed?
Okay, it's fifty-fifty-six to remove the salt shed for sixty thousand. It's, um, fifty-four oh one to reduce the, uh, vehicles to zero and resume it on twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. It was fifty-four twenty-two, equipment maintenance, uh, to increase it by four thousand nine hundred for trafficking monitoring devices.
Is, uh, is that, uh, is that the person who seconded? Was that your understanding?
Yes, that was my understanding, but it wasn't the same as the motion that, um, Alderwoman Chapman was trying to separate.
And my motion was to separate line item fifty-four zero one from Alderwoman Reed's motion.
Mayor, I would like to say, and this is Alderwoman Dales.
Yeah. You second it?
Yes.
Okay then.
Other question?
Okay.
Do you have, uh, do you have the motion now? It's been moved.
I've got the motion.
Are there any questions? Yes.
Yes, um, I'm, I want to, is it okay for me to ask chief a question?
Yeah.
Chief Eiler?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, is that something that you can forego based on compliance and your needs? For, as, based on the cars, is there something that can be done, um? Can it be done for, for the next fiscal year, or is there immediate need? I will make my decision based on that.
Okay, so. Let's go back to the decision made a couple of months ago about purchasing, uh, three fleet vehicles and one admin vehicle. And I strictly stated that I knew, and still know, that we are coming on some financial hardships, not only this fiscal year, but the following fiscal year. So, um, when we made those purchases, I, I said then, and I said the previous part, I mean, I'll say it now. We can go with zero, we can go with a partial, or we can go with the full allotment of four based on the replacement program. And when I discussed it at the last meeting about the budget, um, I was also concerned about future budgets, not just next year, but the following year and the following year to that. Um, so that's when we talked about doing two vehicles. So what I can do, I, I can operate and maintain what I have fleet with, with a zero improvement inside this fiscal year. But we are going to have to increase our, uh, fifty-four twenty-two, uh, capital account. You won't see it unless you're looking at my draft, because I do a lot of subcategories, items of vehicle maintenance and equipment. Um, we're gonna have to increase that by, um, uh, I think it was three thousand dollars, because what we're contending with is continuous repairs and replacement of components as things start to break down. The Ford Tauruses inherently have problems built in. It's not based on the way they are driven, they are based on, it, it's based on the facture. So we, we have a few reoccurring problems with certain components that are very expensive. Um, the recent purchase is going to kind of soften, uh, those repairs and those replacement parts. So I'm, I'll really leave it up to, uh, the budget committee, whether or not they want to do a partial like they discussed before, or a zero or a total. So I'm, I'm, I'm really just gonna leave it at that. But if, if you're looking for a recommendation from me, I would at least do a partial of two. Because if you're looking at future budgets, uh, it would alleviate some stra- financial stress on the next few years.
And you said if not, then, um, three thousand dollars would be recommended for what line item?
That would be, uh, fifty-four twenty-two, uh, capital vehicle maintenance and equipment.
It's actually fifty-four twenty-four, chief.
Uh, you're correct, we, uh, some of, uh, um, some of our con members are, are, are not aligning correctly. I've worked with Patrick on that. And three thousand dollars is an estimate and an estimate only. So it can go above or below that. And it's really hard to estimate it, but, uh, this is like, this is the best I can do for now. So again, I'm gonna leave it up to the budget committee on what they want to do.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, mayor.
All right, roll call vote on the motion.
Okay, is this the motion for Chapman and Dale, uh, what Chapman made and Dale second? Separating line item fifty-one regarding the police car? Is that the motion we're on now? Okay. Alderwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Alderwoman Dales? Did you, I can't hear you. Can someone tell me?
Yes, Fran, yes.
Okay, well, I couldn't hear you at first.
I'm sorry.
That's, that's okay. Alderman Carol?
No.
Alderwoman Marie?
No.
Alderwoman West?
Yes.
Alderwoman Avant Elliott?
Yes.
Alderwoman, I'm sorry, Alderman Thomas? Alderman Thomas? Is he muted?
Uh, he may have left, uh, I don't think he was footing well.
Oh. Okay, well, then I have one, two, three, four yes, two no's, one absent, and one, two absent. So four yes and two no's, mayor.
Okay, who was the second?
Uh, Christian.
Okay, I know, okay, all right, motion passes.
Okay, so, so she's just be, she'll just be doing her motions separate. So the, the two, the two motions that's on the table would now be the fifty-fifty-six and the fifty-four twenty-two. So I guess you have to make a new motion. Alderwoman Reed?
Uh, wait, what did you, Fran, did you say four yeses? Is that what you said? Four yeses and two no's? Okay, sorry. Um. Yeah, so, okay, I'm gonna amend my motion. Um. I guess it depends on how that turns out. So it's with the, the fifty-fifty-six, you know, and the salt shed and the, um.
Fifty-four twenty-two?
Right. Yeah, I was gonna add the vehicle maintenance, but I don't know how the cars are gonna turn out. So I'm not gonna increase vehicle maintenance until then, so just those two then.
Well, you get, what about doing the, what about doing the, uh, vehicle maintenance? I mean, the cars first as the motion, and then you know.
Uh, Alderwoman Reed, would you, uh, present your motion as you see fit, please?
Yeah, I'm gonna do those, I'll, I'll do those two and then do the vehicle. So let's vote on that, on the salt shed and, uh, um, equipment maintenance.
Okay.
Second on that, right?
Second, Avant Elliott.
All right, are there any further discussion? Roll call.
Sorry, I'm just a little confused at this point. What is the motion?
I can barely hear you.
She asked what the motion was.
What you have, please.
So the, the motion is fifty-fifty-six for the salt shed to remove that sixty thousand as budgeted there, because the last payment for Clearspan was made tonight under, over the, the, uh, five hundreds. We already finished paying for that, so there's no point in budgeting the sixty thousand. Does that make sense, Bart? Can you hear me? I can't hear you, though.
Hear me? I said, yes, thank you.
Okay, and then the second line was fifty-four twenty-two, the equipment maintenance to increase it by four thousand nine hundred for trafficking monitoring devices. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Oh, you know what, mayor? Um, planning and zoning, our, our chairman, he asked if the, um, if the electrical work was done on the salt shed, because we only contracted with Clearspan. Did they not do the electrical work for that?
I don't know who did the electrical work.
Can I answer that?
And I believe, okay.
Yeah. Okay, so, uh, based on my knowledge, my, uh, conversation with the street department, um, in the last few days, the electrical work for the connection to the electrical box has not been done yet. Um, beyond that, I don't know what to tell you, but that's, that's what I know.
And I, I could have sworn one of the Alderman, I think Carl asked if the department heads were coming tonight, but only chief showed up and, um, Fran. So no one's here from street, right? And Amy's on.
Well, I sent the invitation to all department heads.
Okay.
All right, and we ready to move on with the vote on the motion. On, uh, Colorado.
The, uh, Alderman Carol?
Yes.
Alderman Thomas? Oh, please. Alderwoman Reed?
Yes.
Alderwoman Dales? I can't hear you.
No.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Alderwoman West?
Yes.
Alderwoman Chapman? Alderwoman Avant Elliott?
Yes.
Okay, mayor, we have three yes, one no, three absent.
We got four yeses.
I have Carol West, I'm sorry, four yes, I'm so sorry. Four yes, three absent, one no.
Right, the motion passes, let's carry on.
Okay.
And then, um, I wanted to make the motion to remove fifty-four oh one, the cars, to zero. And to increase vehicle maintenance fifty-four twenty-four, to increase it by three thousand, which will make it fifteen thousand.
Second.
Okay, I'm, I'm writing that down, just a second. Remove fifty, that's okay, remove fifty-four oh one to zero?
Mm-hmm.
And then increase what?
Fifty-four twenty-four.
Forty-four twenty-four, uh-huh.
By three thousand, which will make it fifteen.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
Any further discussions? Madam Clay, Colorado.
Alderwoman West? Alderwoman Dales?
No.
Alderman Carol?
Yes.
Alderwoman Reed?
Yes.
Alderman Thomas? Alderwoman Chapman?
No.
Is West back?
This is, yes, I'm, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, what's your vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um. Alderman Thomas, did he come back? Okay, one, two, three.
Mine is a yes, you didn't ask me.
I'm sorry, Avant.
That's okay.
And hers is a yes, okay. One, two, three, four yes, two no's, and two absent.
Okay, so let's move on with. Thanks.
Okay, so.
Uh, is it, is it now time for us to move to bill number twenty-five fifty-seven?
We have, we have debt fund, mayor, the debt fund is up on the screen. You just have to review that, and then, um, let me see, sewer fund and street bond, and I think that's it. And I do need to say that I scheduled this meeting to ten o'clock.
Okay.
The other one is supposed to start at ten, so hopefully we don't go over, so we don't have that problem we had last time.
Okay. Do we have the, um, the grant that we just approved in a line item somewhere, or is that? Let me see. Um, Treasurer Howard, do we have the grant, um, in a line item somewhere that Alderwoman Reed mentioned earlier?
Uh, there wouldn't be a grant in the debt fund.
No, I'm just talking about from the previous. Do, do we have that grant that we motioned for to go to the rec center or whatever improvement we mentioned at the last meeting? Is that budgeted somewhere? That's what my question is.
No.
Okay, so we would have to, I guess, figure out something with that as well. Um. Is, would that be something that gets its own line item? Or we have to embed it in something else that you happen to know?
Uh, so.
The block grant?
We'd have to, we'd have to, uh, create a line, line item for that.
Okay, um, do you remember the total for that, that, um, community block grant?
Twenty-nine nine.
Twenty-nine.
Five.
Twenty-nine. Twenty-nine thousand five hundred?
Yes.
Okay. And we already indicated that some of it will be used for. I would like to make a motion for a line item to be created for the community block grant for a total of twenty-nine thousand five hundred.
I second, Carol.
Any further discussion?
Um, Treasurer Howard, where would you, um, create that line item? Would it be a revenue line item in general? Would it be in a contra expense line? How, how are you gonna record that? That's my question.
It'll be a line item in the general fund.
Income, right?
Yes, revenue.
Thank you.
And just for the point of clarification, this is the grant that we voted use for repairs to the rec center instead of what we normally use it for. Is that the one? Okay.
Yes.
All right, uh, there are no further discussion, uh, Madam Clay, Colorado.
Alderwoman Avant Elliott?
Yes.
Alderwoman West?
Yes.
Alderman Carol?
Yes.
Alderwoman Dales? Alderwoman Reed?
Yes.
Alderwoman Chapman?
Yes.
Alderwoman Dales?
Yes.
Alderman Thomas? Uh, oh, yes, mayor, and two absences.
All right, uh, who else would like to proceed?
Um, I would like to make a motion to pass the, uh, fund, the debt fund balance as proposed by Treasurer and Mayor.
Is there a second? Are there any further discussion?
Yes, sir, um, mayor, we're still going through the line items. Is this? Is this just to approve for the debt fund area, please?
Um, I'm not sure what you're saying.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Clay, Colorado.
Alderwoman Reed.
Yes.
Alderwoman Chapman.
Yes.
Alderman Thomas. Oh, I forgot he has, Alderman Carol.
Yes.
Alderwoman Dales.
Yes.
Alderwoman Avant Elliott.
Yes.
What?
West.
Alderwoman West, yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yes, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, can I make a comment, please?
Go right ahead.
Is it possible, if we can allow the citizens to speak, we have fifteen more minutes before the expiration of the meeting, and they haven't had opportunity to speak, is it possible that they could speak so we can vote on the budget before we get off the phone, please?
Uh, yes, we can, it's always possible, yes. Uh, so we'll, we'll have, uh, citizens to make their comments at this time, please.
Am I muted?
No, we can hear you.
All right, okay. This is Wanda Lane, ninety nine fifteen, Martingale. Too much to say, but I want to make a comment about the, the, the police department. I'm really kind of concerned that when a department head presents a budget with the detail that this department head did, how, why there isn't any more consideration that you trust that that person needs what they're asking for in their budget. I don't know about the street department, or, or the building, but I think all department heads should participate in explaining what they need for, to operate their, their budgets. Because what I'm hearing is it's all about the dollars and cents, and it just can't be. Citizens also need to have consideration on the services that we need. So, um, the one couple of things that I, that I, uh, wrote down, and again, way too many. The rec center needs an awful lot of repair. And there was discussion about that at our budget meeting. And since I'm on that, the budget meeting should be conducted by the mayor. When you have too many different people deciding what they're going to do with the budget, it's confusing to the citizens. So, Mayor, I'm going to ask that you please establish a budget committee, so we won't do this again. And we can have, you can present to the board the budget as you asked, and they either accept it or reject it. And if there's some discussions about all of this, that needs to happen at another meeting. You all wasted twenty minutes talking about something at the very beginning of the minute, of the meeting, it's just, it's concerning. So, I'm just gonna let it stay with there. I just, I just think that the whole process is not done with the consideration of the citizens, and we need to work on that.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Uh, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, my name is Wesley Gillespie, I'm at six one nine Marshfield Drive. Uh, my comments will be very short. You know, I, I come from a background, uh, probably like many of you that are on this call. And I have, uh, had my fair share of budget planning, in coming to a meeting and coming to a vote on the budget, uh, that is put forth. But, in, in, within the, uh, confines that I operated in, if you did not review your particular department, uh, line by line, and then you presented your New Year's budget, uh, then you weren't prepared. And from the display of tonight's meeting, I, I just wonder, uh, how many people actually took time? Because that's not a, a, uh, a good read, like a good book. It takes time to analyze line by line, uh, and understand where the money is spent. We're talking about cutting from the police department when, as a citizen in Belle Fountain, I alone have placed over fifteen calls, uh, for the police department to come to my aid. So, when we talk about cutting the community, uh, involvement, things like that, then you're putting the community at jeopardy. For all of the aldermen's that are on this, uh, call, I know for a fact that, uh, some wards are having their fair share of criminal activity and things of that nature. So, if you cut certain departments, then, uh, or certain areas of the police department, then you're putting yourselves and your citizens, uh, in danger. And I can, uh, speak firsthand that I think the police department in, in this particular ward, Ward one, I think we have a pretty good, uh, communication process to eliminate any type of safety threat to not only the citizens, but more, uh, so the children that play up and down, uh, the street. So, I just hope that there is some type of due diligence, uh, with the, uh, aldermen's, uh, before you come to the public, uh, and discuss the budget. All of this, uh, conversation that has taken place, it tells me, as a, as, as a professional, that there was not due diligence done on each and every part of, uh, the departments, the divisions, uh, of the city before you came to this meeting, because this meeting, uh, if you would have done this in corporate America, it would not, uh, it, it would not go over very well. And there, there would be, uh, a lot of concern as far as the, the knowledge in, in the research that each person has done, in their responsibility, if you're going to spend millions and millions of dollars of taxpayers' money. I would thought that this process would have been a little bit more professional, in my opinion. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Um, yes, uh, Ask You Teller, ninety seven hundred Block Birch Manor. Um, the display of, um, the meeting today and previous meetings only support the training that needs to take place with the board and elected officials, period. Um, I think if proper training was given, then a lot of the unnecessary back and forth, um, to piggyback off the last resident, the perception of unprofessionalism would be different, because I think people will, uh, understand better what it is that, uh, the process is and, um, how the board should function as a whole. So, in the midst of arguing over five hundred dollars or whatever it costs for the training, I think that will be well spent into getting everybody trained, so that this type of meeting doesn't continue for two more years until the next board members get elected. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone else from the public?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, can I?
Oh, okay, good. I just wanted to, um, just wanted to say that, uh, I agree with Mr. Wesley, I believe. This type of, the way this was meeting was held was, is, it was not, uh, productive. And, um, I, I just wanted to say that, you know, I am so disappointed, but, anyway. One thing that could help with this in the future is that when you prepare the budget, you need to have everybody, all department heads, in the discussion. All department heads, be manned, it'd be mandatory that they present a budget. I saw the police department's budget, I didn't see anything from the street, I didn't see anything from anybody else. And then, secondly, I wanted to say that, to the Treasurer, on your next presentation, if you're there in the next time, the next fiscal year, I would add the actual, what happened actually in the la, the previous fiscal years, that way you can have a better comparison. And, and it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be so confusing. Right now, you're just seeing a budget compared to a budget. We want to know what actually happened in this fiscal year, the previous fiscal year, to kind of get a train. Also about that Prop P thing, and about decreasing the, uh, police department's salaries. I agree with the Chief, you know, Prop P was designated for the first responders. And some of that, uh, Prop P money that is out there, which, and I did see that Alderwoman Reed said that you're going to make your, uh, revenue agree with the expense, which I agree with that. But, I, I, I'm really concerned about, um, thinking about decreasing the public safety, I mean, the police department's salary, because you lose police, what are the citizens gonna do? You know, right now, it's, it's, it's a bad environment right now with police. And we don't want to make it worse. And the last thing I want to say is, uh, you know, um, I'm in the finance department. In fact, I'm at work right now. And I think, I think everybody should, on the board, should have some type of training on how the process of budgeting should work. And, and, and I think things will be a, a whole lot easier, and it won't be this back and forth. And, 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 uh, what happened tonight? I mean, this, this was just, just awful. And that's all I have to say. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Fran, my name is Paula Battle, and I'm at one oh six ten Fox Lair Drive. Um, and that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, before, um, is Paula Battle leaves, could she, um, just give us a little overview of what she actually does right now? I, I, I just want the board to know.
What I do? Uh, right now, I'm doing everything, I'm, I'm actually.
And what city, and what city do you work for?
I work for the City of University City. And, um, I'm definitely handling the budget, you know, I actually do payroll, I mean, just everybody, just about everything. I'm the, um, right now, the interim Assistant Finance Director. So, I, I'm, I'm just, again, I, I think that everybody would definitely, definitely need to, um, you know, take advantage of the municipal league, uh, training. They have a lot of, uh, webinars on budgeting, the process. You know, I'm gonna tell you, in this, in this particular environment and what's happening, to have a budget, a balanced budget, or even a, a surplus, is not, not possible. There's a lot of municipal parities out here that's not gonna have a, a balanced budget. A lot of them are gonna have a deficit. And that's because, you know, this, the, the revenue is not there. And, um, again, you know, I just don't want to take, it, it's about ten o'clock, so I'm, I'm gonna get off. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Mayor, this is Felicia Gillespie, six one nine Marshfield Drive.
Yes.
I just want to say that, I think the, the board needs to understand that, that budgets are fluid documents. And you have to revisit it throughout the year. And once the budget is, once the budget is presented, you either vote for it or against it, and then you go back and you revise it. All this discussion tonight was brutal. It was horrible. And it's not efficient the way you all work. These last few board meetings via Zoom have been, I mean, they have just been taxing. And you cannot continue to operate as a board in this manner. So, my hope is that you all can try to come together and try to figure out how to work more efficiently for the city. And I'd like to comment on what Alderman Carol said about the, um, the housing violations, that only twenty were written. And every citizen that's on this, uh, Zoom meeting tonight knows that there are over, there are more than twenty violations that need, uh, to be addressed in our city. And so, my, my, my suggestion would be not to cut to just a part-time person, so that only occupancy permits can be addressed. But maybe take a good look at the person you have that is supposed to be out, uh, writing the violations. Maybe that person is not doing their job. And we need to revisit that position and get somebody who is capable and willing to go out and write the violation. Because when properties are not up to code, and they are not abated, that causes the, my property value to go down, and I have a problem with that. And I think everyone on this call should have a problem with that. So, that's how we need to look at that issue. If the person, if the people in place are not doing their jobs, then we need to reevaluate it. And so, with that being said, I'm just gonna, I know we gotta, there's a separation of church and state, but every time I'm on one of these calls, I am constantly in prayer, because what I hear and I see, it is very disturbing. So, I'm just hoping that you all can get this together. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mayor.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public would like to speak? All right, seeing none, uh, uh, we, we go to the, um, Alderwoman West, uh.
Mayor, excuse me, Mayor. We, we were right in the middle of our last, um, two funds, before you went to public comment, per, um, Alderwoman Dale's, uh, request. So, we're almost finished, if we can get through these two. And then, um, then, uh, if we, we're gonna either be making a motion to, um, meet on Monday, so that the budget can reflect the changes that's indicated, or we're gonna just say that we're voting it as amended tonight, it's gonna be one of the two, based on that. But, um, we were on the sewer fund when the, the public began to, uh, give their comment.
All right.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the sewer fund, all of those items are correct, let me look at mine. Um, Howard, um, this is the, the area where I indicated that for the, uh, line item five zero zero one, the previous budget had seventy five thousand, and this one had seventy eight, for the nineteen twenty budget. Um, so, um, I would suggest that all of the nineteen twenty budget items, uh, clearly reflect the same amounts as before, unless they were, unless that's the amended amount, um, of the budget. So, then, when the public is reviewing it later, they will be able to see that that is in alignment with the previous budget. So, is there any changes, because I can make a motion? I'd like to make a motion that we approve the sewer fund, um, income and expenses for a total of twenty four thousand seven hundred.
Is there a second?
Carol, second.
Are there any further discussion? Madam Clay, Colorado, please.
Alderman Carol.
Yes.
Alderwoman Avant Elliott.
Yes.
Alderwoman Reed.
Yes.
Alderwoman Chapman. Alderwoman Dales. Alderman Thomas. Alderwoman West.
Other woman West.
Yes.
I'm back, Fran.
I'm so, I'm sorry, what?
Did you hear me, Fran? Sorry. I said, yes.
Is that Tatman?
Yes.
Okay, other woman Dale's.
Yes.
Okay, you're so far away. Mayor, all yes.
All right, let's proceed to the next item, please.
And so, on this bond fund, Mayor, this other woman Reed. I had spoken with treasurer, or maybe I emailed you, I'm not sure. But we can alleviate some burden from the general fund in using some of the street bond fund for the street department. I said, if you wanted to, you know, figure it out for you, you know, get your own confirmation from the auditors, you could. But that's what that bond fund was for, for all street, you know, anything related to street repairs. And I had suggested that we add the street department salary and Medicare line items that you have in general revenue to the bond fund to alleviate some of the pressure on the general fund.
Well, I don't think we're gonna take anything out of streets as bad as our streets are.
No, not take it out.
What are you saying?
Re- reallocate the expenses. Do you understand what I'm saying, Treasurer Howard? Maybe you can explain it better to the mayor.
Yeah, so you're recommending to move salaries from the street department from the general fund into the, the bond fund.
Right, and I think you only have 47,000 in there today with the applicable, you know, 7.65% for Medicare to be moved over here. So, it should be like 50,000. Does that make sense to you, Mayor? Or maybe Howard can explain it to you.
That makes sense. I think, based on the previous audit findings, if that's a decision that we need to make, it should be reflected here in the transferred out section. Otherwise, that, that would be an audit finding.
Right, exactly. So, we should, we should budget for it at budget time.
Yeah.
So, that's my motion, is that we actually reallocate the street department salary line item in respect of FICA Medicare line item from general fund to the street bond fund.
I'm second.
Any further discussions? Oh, in favor, I mean, Colerole, Madam Claire.
I have one question, just clarification. So, Treasurer Howard, you said that is, that's allowable, that you can move those line items to restricted funds? Because those funds on, on that line item can all be lumped together like that?
It has to be reflected directly for street projects. So, so only for street-related projects.
Right. I just wanted to clarify that. So, those funds still be restricted. But I'm saying you can, the street department allocations along with those restricted bond funds, line items can be, is that applicable under proper audit practices?
Yeah, well, your phone was breaking up a little bit. But as far as this fund is concerned, it, it has to be specifically related to street repairs only. So, yeah, so not from the standpoint of general revenue or the salaries of these individuals, specifically when they're working on these street repair projects.
Thank you.
I just need you to explain it to me one more time. So, basically, what we're moving over, those salaries, you said they could only be used for the streets. Okay, so that's the salaries that they're using when they're working on the streets. Is that correct, yes or no?
That's correct.
All right, Madam Claire Colerole.
Other woman West.
Yes.
Other man Carroll.
Yes.
Other woman Reed.
Yes.
Other woman Tatman.
Yes.
Other woman Avant Elliott.
Yes.
Other woman Dale's.
Yeah.
All yes, Mayor.
All right, let's move to the next item.
Mayor, we had not addressed this before. But I think that based on the discussions with the rec center, it will be appropriate for there to be a motion to remove the rec center office manager and assistant aquatics director positions for those funds to be a part of administrative salaries. So, I don't know what administrative salaries, but we discussed not putting anyone else in those positions. So, I'm voting to eliminate the rec center office manager and assistant aquatics director as positions.
I'll second it. Other woman Reed.
All right, yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna read, what did you say?
I thought that was her motion, so I seconded to remove those two positions. That was my understanding.
That is, that is my understanding as well. However, I don't agree with it, that you could just eliminate two positions without, you know, just without sitting down, talking about it and what impact it would have, not only, but the, but the rec center.
I think we talked about it in a previous meeting, Mayor, where we also asked Amy and them, and they indicated that, I assumed the work had been redistributed. But we did not actually have, in the history of our books, assistant aquatics director. So, I don't know if that position was created. But there is not even a salary line item specific for assistant aquatics director. It's only aquatics director. And this was the recreation office manager. It was my understanding from a previous board meeting where we discussed this, that they were okay with that position being eliminated. So, that, that creates opportunity. Now, we still have the director seat that is, is still vacant, that has not been.
Voice.
Go ahead, Amy.
Okay. We cannot do, okay, seven, we had seven full-time positions available at the beginning of the year, or beginning of the fiscal year. Right now, we only have three. We have to have, you know, somebody in the administration department.
We can't really hear you. Your voice kind of breaking up.
Okay, I'm sorry. We cannot do with our department with the three positions that we are now filling.
So, you still need a director, right? Because those, I was just making a motion for the office manager and assistant aquatics director. So, you still need a city director, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Just do away with those two right now.
Yes.
Make do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I remember that being the discussion.
That was, I mean, I'm trying to figure this meeting out while you did all this discussion and, and made this decision. I'm not aware of it, of a meeting that I called while we discussed the budget to that extent in hiring and firing people, eliminating positions. How did this?
So, Mayor, during the budget discussions is where this normally happens. That's why I was bringing it.
What budget discussion was this, please?
Okay, I thought I heard other woman Wes trying to come in. We will have to look at the minutes. It was not a budget discussion. We were talking about positions when people left and what could happen with those positions. And they gave a report, and that was before COVID, I recall, where we were actually in, sitting on the dials in the city hall. So, this was as the individuals transitioned and what options were available as they transitioned. So, that was the office manager. And when we had the transition of assistant aquatics director, it was also discussed as well about that position. In fact, when it was believed that, that the assistant aquatics director was going to receive the position of director, it was discussed even last year about removing that position because that would increase the affordability of the director. So, I think the minutes will have to be reviewed for you to know exactly when that discussion happened, but it did take place. That's, that's my only frame of reference to bring it up again.
Who chaired that, ma'am?
And, and this is all, this is all the woman West. And I think I may have been the first person to bring up that position when, okay, so I don't know the positions, but I know the person's name and I can't say it. But when that person retired, I talked to Martha and Amy and I discussed the fact that, you know, the board had been reviewing the cost of the rec center and opposed, as opposed to the money they were bringing in and asked if there was any way they could eliminate that position of the person who had retired. And Martha and Amy both had been racking their brains on how to eliminate some of the costs. And so, what they've done is, they decided they could eliminate that position. They would close down the rec center on the weekends. They would shorten the hours during the week, all in an effort to cut down on the costs. And I believe they've done that. And if we can, and they can, eliminate that position and work without it, I believe it's in the best interest of the city to move forward with that. Their recommendation about everything, and I think they've done that. And so, that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Howard, did we get that recommendation? Patrick, did we, did we, did we get that recommendation? So, I don't.
And so, this is all the woman West again. So, they have been without leadership, specifically the director of Parks and Recreation, who I think retired or, yeah, retired in September of 2019. And so, they have been without that leadership. And I know they have reached out to get assistance and have not received it from anyone except the local police. They were not, as any other employee who works under someone are not aware of everything that has to take place. They were not aware of the budget because they've never been involved in that process. And so, they're doing the very best that they can. They have called on Mark, who retired, and someone else who quit in order to try to make the recreation center work. Giving up that position and the other position, I think, is their effort in trying to reduce the budget as much as they can. Thank you.
Could I speak for a second? This is Martha from the rec department.
Oh, go ahead.
Hi, Mayor. This is Martha. Yes, Amy and I have spoke about it. And we can definitely eliminate the position of office manager. That can be taken over by Amy and myself and part-time employees. We can also eliminate the position of assistant aquatics director as long as we are able to fill our maintenance positions so that someone, hopefully two people, are available to help us with the maintenance of the two swimming pools. That would be critical since we are so short. But we could get rid of those two positions. And as long as we are able to hire at least someone to fill in for janitorial and maintenance to compensate on the lack of people that can maintain the pools and the rest of the rec center. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any, any, any other comments are concerned?
Yes, I would like to say that the position of maintenance in the recreation department, since it's not going to be a full-time position, I would like to combine it with the, maybe with city hall and combine the two and make it a full-time position. I mean, I know this is something that's ever happened before. But is that something that could be, you know, something that we could do in now?
Amy, I had a question. This is other woman Reed. So, today you have that open maintenance position from the retired individual. And you have the open director. Are you saying you don't want to hire that second maintenance person? Because I know your other maintenance worker has been here for over 20, 20-some years too. So, is that what you're saying? You don't want that position?
No, no, no. We definitely have to fill that position. I'm talking about a part-time custodial position.
I, I thought there was a part-time custodian at the rec center. I can't think of his name, but I can see his face.
His name is.
I mean, you don't have to say his name. I'm sorry.
Okay, he has had medical issues since actually the beginning of the pandemic.
Okay.
Nothing to do with the pandemic. But I don't expect him to come back.
Oh, okay, okay.
But we do have somebody that could fulfill his position. And he could also take over the maintenance position in, you know, in city hall.
Okay.
Okay, well, you guys are fine. Would it proceed with, with the, with the motion?
We had, we had a motion and a second, Mayor. So, we're just waiting for the vote.
Are there any further discussion? Roll call, Madam Claire.
Okay, what, what is the motion, please?
The motion was to eliminate the recreation manager and assistant aquatics director salaries to replace in administrative salaries.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
It's actually the office supervisor is the name of the position.
Office supervisor, okay. The office, the rec center office supervisor and assistant aquatics director.
Okay, I got it. And that motion was made by Avant Elliott and then seconded by Reed?
Yes.
Okay, Alderman Carroll.
Yes.
Other woman Reed.
Yes.
Other woman West.
Yes.
Other woman Tatman.
Yes.
Other woman Avant Elliott.
Yes.
Other woman Dale's.
I had a question. The question was, the salaries are being moved over to administration for the rec center? Or is it for city hall?
That's up for discussion.
Yeah, so they will no longer have that in their salary line item, so we move it to administrative salaries as we would not know how those funds are used. Yeah.
No. No?
No.
Okay, so Mayor, we have one, two, three, four, five, yes, one, no, two absent.
Okay, let's move forward to the next item.
So have we concluded everything, all our amendments? So Mayor, we can either move to make a motion to approve the budget as amended with all the changes, or we can make a motion to have a meeting on Monday to see the actual changes. Is, what would you like to happen?
Let's, let's move an option as amended.
Okay. Alda Woman West will, has that ordinance.
Bill number 2587, an ordinance adopting the budget for the year 2020-2021 fiscal year for the City of Bellefontaine, Neighbors, Missouri.
The second.
Mayor?
Yes?
Yes, Alda Woman West, can I make a motion to amend it? I was, it won't include the amended items in the budget with you reading it as such.
Okay, so you amend?
Okay.
The motion.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to amend, sorry, I don't have the bill number. Fran, could you share the bill number, because I can't?
Seven.
Twenty-five eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven. Five eighty-seven?
Twenty-five eighty-seven.
Twenty-five eighty-seven, to include all of the changes as voted on for a first and second read.
Second.
Are there any further discussion? Roll call.
Okay, Alda Woman West?
Yes, on the amendment.
Alda Woman Tappman?
Yes.
Alda Woman Reed?
Yes.
Alda Man Carroll?
Yes.
Alda Woman Avant Elliott?
Yes.
Alda Woman Dales?
On the amendment.
Huh?
Yes, on the amendment.
Okay. So we have all yes, Mayor, and two absent.
Okay.
All right.
I would like to move on to the second re, read of Bill number 2587 as amended, an ordinance approving the budget for the 2021 fiscal year.
Is that a second?
Alda Woman West.
I thought the ordinance was being read by Barbara.
Yeah, I did a motion to amend it, so she gave me the floor to amend it because she didn't put it in her motion.
Want me to call the roll, Mayor?
Was it second?
Alda Woman West seconded.
Was there on the question?
Are there any further question?
Alda Woman Reed, I would like to actually make a motion to table the budget into our next meeting so we can see the changes the Treasurer makes.
That, that is not, the motion on the floor is to accept a budget as amended. There's a motion and a second, and we're calling for a, a vote at this time.
And, and sir, I made a motion to table it, just like they just made a motion to amend, I'm making a motion to table.
Because we, well, we got, we got a motion and a second.
Okay.
For the roll call.
Okay, so we on the question, she didn't interject it. Can we table it for Monday? Can you do it specifically to Monday? So we can do it before the thirtieth? I would like to make a motion to rescind my, my second read to table the Bill number 2587 to a special meeting on Monday at seven o'clock.
I second, Alda Woman Reed.
I have a question.
Which question, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor, as the Budget Director, is Monday approval date for you?
Uh, I'm counting it here now. Well, Monday is okay for me.
This is Treasurer Howard. I'm not available Monday, but I'll have, I'll send you the updates.
Okay. Thank you.
The budget has been passed before the thirtieth?
Yes, so we're trying to do Monday, yes, sir.
Who else, is there anyone else going to be missing Monday?
I will.
This is Alda Woman West, I'm not sure, I should have gone, gone to urgent care today, but I did not go because of the meeting, so I'm not sure what's going to happen. I have some personal medical issues going on, so I don't know, but right now you can't just wait for the meeting because of me.
Well, what is it, what's wrong with the budget? You've amended it, and now we, we, we asking for a motion to pass the budget as amended? I don't understand what's wrong with that.
So I think, Mayor, just for clarification, I do understand, we, all the changes we made, we now do not see a bottom line as a result of those changes. So getting the clean copy would at least give us a bottom line. So right now, we cannot even vote to whether it's a deficit or, or how much of a deficit it is, so that just gives an opportunity for a clean version, and, you know, that, that would be what the public will see on Monday, and then we will be completing the second half of the read. So the first read has passed, and we'll just be doing the second read, and we'll be finished with the budget. So I'm confident with, based on how we facilitated this process, that it, that a clean version of the budget should not result in any additional change.
Are you sure about that?
Unless you make so.
No.
Okay. So I, I think that we made it through based on our ordinance, so, but yeah, so that's the explanation of that, just for clarification, so.
All right. What's the motion?
Roll call, yeah, so roll call vote is a motion to table the second read of Bill number 2587 to Monday at seven o'clock for a special board meeting.
And add to that, we will not go longer than a half hour.
Yes, sir.
So the meeting is from seven to seven thirty?
Right.
He said no more than an hour, seven to eight.
Half an hour.
They don't take long, all right, go ahead.
Okay.
Alda Woman West?
Yes.
Alda Woman Tappman?
Yes.
Alda Woman Reed? Alda Woman Reed, okay, Alda Man Carroll?
Yes.
Alda Woman Dales?
No.
Alda Woman Avant Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor, all yes and one no, and two absent.
Okay, then, so we will meet Monday at seven to finalize the budget.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right. All right, I mean.
Yeah, okay. All right, Mayor, I gotta give, I'm gonna make a motion for the closed session. Attorney White Coleman, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I don't have the section numbers in front of me, can you tell me the sections that I need to do the motion for, for the closed session, for hiring and, and real estate?
Yes, give me just a second.
Okay.
One oh point oh two one dash one and dash.
Okay, okay, say it again, Fran?
Oh, I was waiting up, but it's six one oh point oh two one, and number subsection three is for personnel, and subsection two is for real estate.
Okay, so we doing two and three, right? Or we doing all?
You're doing litigation as well.
Okay.
So we're doing all three.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion that we go into closed session for sections sixteen point oh one dash one, two, and three.
That's sixteen point zero two one, subsection one, two, and three.
Yes, sixteen point, point zero two, and then one, two, and three, sections one, two, and three. That's Barbara West seconding.
Second, okay. Barbara, I have to hear you say it.
Say it again.
Alda Woman West, I second.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, should I call the roll now?
Please do.
Okay, Alda Woman West?
Yes.
Alda Woman Tappman?
Yes.
Alda Woman Reed?
Yes.
Alda Man Carroll?
I'm through with the other two meetings.
Huh?
Yeah.
Alda Man Carroll? I guess he's gone. Alda Woman Dales?
Yes, sorry, Alda Man Carroll, yes.
Alda Woman, okay, Carol, Alda Woman Avant Elliott?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Mayor, oh, yes.
Then, good night to all of our citizens who held on, and we'll come back Monday, finalize the budget, hopefully. Good night all, thank you for.
We got a document from here, oh, no, they said.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay, so we probably closed out again on this, you guys, so we're not going to go over, but first I'm going to take a break for a second, and then the other, we have to go to the other meeting.
Do we have to dial back in?
Yes, on that second one that says closed session, because you have a different number. Patrick, you don't have it. Only the board members and the city attorney have that closed session.
Well, you better, you better text me that new number.
Miranda, can you text them, because I don't have the number that you guys have?
I've got it, I've got it.
Okay, so I'm gonna take a quick, huh? You're, I can't hear you, Elise. What, oh, you're talking to the mayor?
Are we adjourned? It's a motion so we can adjourn the meeting so we can go to the next one.
Right, absolutely, we've done that, we've adjourned, and we're getting ready, leave this meeting and, and down in for the, for the next one. Okay?
What's your say, Mayor?
We're leaving the meeting now.
Yes, okay, I'll click it off and go to the other one. After I take a.